Please rise for the invocation and pledge. Please welcome Minister Claudia Rush, is that right? To give the invocation. She is from the Brook Amy Worship Center. And thank you for being here with us this morning. We appreciate it.
Gracious God, we come now in the name of Jesus to say thank you for a new day. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of today's decisions, today's consideration, all that will impact lives on today. We pray your presence. We pray your guidance. We pray your direction. We pray that you will give us all wisdom to do the right thing for everybody involved. And we'll give you the praise, the honor, and the glory for all that you do for each of us on this day. In Christ Jesus' name I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Today is June the 21st, 2023. We're here located in Oasis County Courthouse, Corpus Christi, Texas. The time is 9:13. And we have a quorum. We have Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Amadis, Commissioner Chesney, myself, our Judge might be joining us later in Zoom, so. Just I'd like to ask if there are any disclosures of conflict of interest? So we can address them at this point. Here in the non, we will move on to the public comment. And do we have any public comment? Victoria Holland. Victoria Holland, you here?
Good morning, Commissioners. It's come to my intention that there might be some abuse with these certificates of obligations that are being issued. I understand as far-
Excuse me, sir. You want to go ahead and say your name and where you live?
My name is Daniel Restly.
Your address?
I live at 2313 Louis Well Drive, Corpus Christi.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
All right.
I just want to make it aware that there's concerns out in the public that these certificates of obligations are being used for non-emergency items. There's rumors that they're being issued for the hospital district. And I think anything for the hospital district should be brought before the voters. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. Dub Taylor.
Commissioners, I'm here to support a specific agenda item. Should I speak now or wait until that comes up?
Well, you can wait till the agenda item comes up.
Okay. I'll do that. It's 3A2.
Yeah, we can answer any questions or whatever. It's a 3A2, right? Lindy Winkle? Is that Lindy or Wendy?
Close. Hi, my name is Cindy Winkley.
Cindy, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. That's okay. And let's see, I live at 514 Pasadena Place. And I am the Secretary on the Oasis County Animal Services Advisory Board. As you guys know, there's a whole lot going on. I've got three different issues. I probably won't be able to get to them all, but for the advisory board, we've been on hold since October pending an investigation. Not one person has told us why we're being investigated. We don't even know what's going on. I understand the investigation is complete, yet I don't know the results. It's been almost one year since this board has been able to meet due to this Commissioners' Court having our hands tied. So somebody needs to tell us what's going on. The next thing, out at Animal Services, there's a sign posted that volunteers do not have access to the office or the kennels, and they're not allowed to take photographs anymore. First of all, guys, this kind of seems illegal. I just don't see how you can keep people out of a public county building that we literally paid for. I don't know what's going on out here. But I've also heard that there is a person who's getting in there who is a volunteer. So it seems like if you know somebody, I guess you can get in, or I don't know if you're, you know, pals with somebody, that you can get in there. So we need to find out why people are being denied access into this place and, you know, why certain people who are affiliated with A.D. Hernandez, the Commissioners' Court manager, are able to get in and the rest of us are not. So it seems like, I don't know, discrimination, or I don't know what's going on. And I'm not sure the county wants to take this road. It seems just completely illegal to me. So the third thing is on your agenda regarding the new facility. And it looks like you guys just want to push it off and just forget about everything. I don't know what you guys are doing out there. You're just trying to abandon the place and let Corpus Christi ACS take over because now you want to push off even talking about the new facility. It was voted on, it was approved in January of 2021. You guys already paid Shelter Planners of America $85,000 for their needs assessment. The facility is considered undersized and obsolete, too remote, hard to find. And in 2022, you guys voted to allocate the remaining funds to complete the project. So I don't know what you guys are doing there either, but I hope you're going to reconsider, you know, keeping that discussion alive. And I'll be back until I get answers.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that want-
Can I just, I can't, we're not allowed to respond directly to people that make public comment, but I do want to remind anybody who's watching this that we will have agenda items where people can respond to the allegations that have been made, and I certainly will and will ask the county manager to at the appropriate time. But since we can't respond in public comment, those will be addressed in the agenda items in a very public and transparent way. And if anyone's watching and wants to stick around for that, they can, but we can't respond to any of the inaccurate allegations that have been made until that time comes.
Is there anybody else that didn't sign up? Want to sign up at this time?
I did sign up. I was indisposed when I was called.
I'm sorry?
I did sign up, but I was indisposed when-
You're Victoria Holland?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Sure.
Very much appreciate it. I'm here to speak today about the hospital districts certificate of obligation for $45 million. This project frankly should be a bond. We talk a lot about, you know, what can be done versus what should be done. It's the purview of those elected to differentiate between what's legal and what's rational. And when it comes to starting huge, and frankly, we don't know quite how many millions of dollars this project will get to. We have inquired and we don't know. But if it costs about a quarter of a billion dollars to build a high school, then I would think that building a hospital is likely to cost quite significant more. So this certificate of obligation is just the start of what seems to be a project in place without clear funding sources in mind. I think that it would be irresponsible for this to be authorized. I think it would be irresponsible for us to go ahead and move forward with this. It may be that this hospital is a good idea, but it should be a vote that the people get to see, get to weigh that with their own minds, and ultimately, it should be a bond that people get to vote on, not a certificate of obligation that puts debt on the good people of this county without their knowledge or say so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that want to speak? Ever none, I guess we'll go ahead and move on, on to the consent agenda. Now moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Let's see, I don't think I had any to pull. Some moved, Commissioner or Judge pro temp. Nobody wants to second my motion. It's going to die.
Second the motion. I'll save you. Is there, I guess not, no, nobody wants to pull anything at this time? So we are-
Excuse me, sir. Commissioner, I'd like to pull D.
I'm sorry?
D.
D.
On consent agenda, I just want some explanation on that.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? Anything else? So we're going to go ahead right now and motion to approve A through C and then E through O. And so the motion on the floor, in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Hang on. Since you placed a motion, somebody has to second it because it was-
I made the motion, he seconded it.
But you said for the whole thing, then we pulled the item D.
Oh, okay. Accept D. Then amend the motion to pull D. Thank you. That's a good correction. So my motion would be all but item D.
Second.
Good catch.
Hold on, first, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same name.
Okay, we'll go back to D. Commissioner Hernandez.
I just want some explanation on this motion here. Special motion regular list, special motions list, Lake Wood and Andrews and Newman, special motions list, American Rescue Plan Act. Who can give me some explanation, Devin?
That would be me, sir.
Okay.
What is your question regarding them?
Well, can you explain it to me?
What was it?
We have special motions that are submitted to Commissioners' Court. There is a list of-
Oh, you're including all of them? Or what, all the special motions?
Yes. However, Commissioners' Court has asked us previously to pull certain items and have them reported on a separate list. And so at the request of Commissioners' Court, we have created additional lists for those special motions. They all used to be one lump list. And then we were requested to break out L.A.N., we were requested to break out ARPA, we were requested to break out Hagerty. Bank of, Bank of America gets pulled out as well. And so those, each of those special items has their own list.
Okay, they've been done individually?
Yes, they're individually, and they were all attached individually to the agenda.
Okay.
So there was a separate list and backup for each of the names.
I understand that.
All right.
Thank you.
So I got a question now that you brought that up. The American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, so we, since then, we saying we, how much are we providing from the ARPA funds? Is that what we're saying here?
No, no, sir. This is just the one payment that we're making out of ARPA that's coming back to court for approval. It appears to be the, from Odessa Pumps and Equipment for two new diesel-powered pumps with trailers. It's a total of equipment purchased by Public Works of $108,956 collectively.
Well, that kind of clears it. It'll be more there, it would have been fine, you know?
I'm sorry?
If we could identify, it'll be more, because I really didn't know the ARPA funds, what kind of funds we're using and for what, you know?
Okay, so that was the ARPA funds. It was previously approved by Commissioners' Court on April 26th of 2023, and it's all included in the backup with the, the backup to the list for the ARPA attachment. And it has been approved by Mr. Pennmantel.
Okay, no problem. Okay. All right, do I, Commissioner, you want to go ahead and make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, yes, sir.
Motion moved and seconded, and we approve item number D. Holding for, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, we go into, move into the regular agenda. Is there any, any motion for discussion and second, any second? So we're at the regular agenda number one, right? So agenda A, item one, is to discuss and consider approval of interlocal agreement between City of Corpus Christi, Oasis County, City of Driscoll, related to consolidated emergency dispatch center service MetroCom. I don't know who the item that is, and so what is it?
Commissioner Captain White here, in case you need to answer any questions.
Whose item, whose item is that?
Commissioners, thank you, it's Chief White. Do y'all have any questions on the proposal?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
A while back, I heard in the news where they were having problems with the response time. Are we talking about the 911 call?
Response time for like units arriving or?
Yes, yes, yeah, emergency units.
That would be separate from 911. We're talking about receiving the call, putting the call into the system, and dispatching with the, how quickly the units arrive and how backlog they are. MetroCom has no control over that.
Okay.
I think the MetroCom mostly with your dispatchers.
Yes, that's our, that's our 911 call taking in our dispatching. And we've been 911 call taking dispatching for Driscoll for close to, I think, 12 years now, and this is just a renewal of the agreement that we have with them.
Just to continue, just to continue.
Yes, sir.
Very good. So is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
We move to second, that we're going to continue the agreement with the city in Oasis County and City of Driscoll. Holding for, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Say motion, nay.
Thank you, sir.
Item number two, discuss and consider amendment in Oasis County property assessed clean energy, pace, and correspondent forms to update the model program documents to allow participants with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD, and/or Federal Housing Administration, multifamily housing projects to utilize in Oasis County Pace Program. This is county attorney, is this something for you, Ginny?
This is a contract we have, it is a legally sufficient contract that has been viewed by our office as to the content of that. I believe there was a speaker who mentioned he wanted to talk to the court.
Commissioners, my name's Dub Taylor with the Texas Pace Authority based in Austin, Texas, and we administer the Pace Program for the county. The original, when the county originally created the program a number of years ago, there was a report that describes how the program works, and then there's associated documents. Those have been updated and for your consideration today to include language that the FHA required for any HUD-financed properties to use Pace. So that's essentially the change that's before you today. The program we've done, we've had a number of inquiries from property owners in the county. We've done workshops. We worked with a number of property owners individually, and we believe that next month in Corpus, there will be a new multifamily project that will utilize Pace that's being developed by a property owner that has done similar multifamily projects at Rockport post Harvey for new rental property. So we'd like to, we'll be happy to report that in the next couple of months. We believe it's a new application, but today before you are just conforming changes to these documents to include language that HUD required.
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
How many years have you been doing this for the county?
The county adopted Pace in 20, like late 2016, December of 2016, and so we have operated the program since then.
Okay, thank you.
Anything other questions? Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion second, holding for, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, sir, for being here. Appreciate it. Discussing, number three, A3, will be discuss and consider appointing Oasis County Committee to negotiate a proposed licensing agreement with Yobi Park related to potential modification and licensing of the ballpark at the Richard and Borchardt Regional Fairgrounds and related matters.
Commissioner, we could move that further down the agenda. They haven't arrived from Houston yet to give a presentation, if that's possible, sir.
Okay, thank you. Number four, A4, will be discuss and consider approval of request for a Doom protection permit for the renewal of replacement on a existing Doom walkover at Emeralds Row, Mostane Island, Oasis County, Texas. This is Commissioner Chesney.
Is Scott here across? Do we need to do anything? Okay.
I think Christine is on her way.
Is Christine on her way?
Yeah, she said she was almost here, so I don't know if you want to-
I mean, I'm, we can, we can do it. I don't, I think we're fine to go. I mean, do y'all want to?
We're not at Emeralds Row.
Right, I know, that's what I'm saying, so. Let me, let me wait. Commissioner, let me, let's wait till Christine gets here. I just want to make sure, what?
Yeah, we'll come back.
I know Stephanie's on, but I want to make sure that staff on both of these say that they, that they're, I know they're okay, but I always like to have staff say they're okay, also that I'm not just misrepresenting staff's position. So if we could just wait a few minutes and someone call Christine and make sure she's on her way, or get ahold of Scott.
We'll come back.
I thought one of them was going to be here, three and four judge, or commissioner, judge, commissioner.
Three and four?
Yeah, if y'all, if y'all don't mind, just on the other one too, if y'all don't mind till Christine gets here.
You mean, you mean four and five.
Three is the baseball.
Sorry, four and five. My bad. Four and five.
All right, agenda item number six, discuss and consider authorizing requests for funding for the $2,213,000 from the Oasis County Hospital District for public health services and activities for fiscal year 23, 24. Is anybody here, what's the agenda item this was?
Commissioner, this agenda item was table last time. I was requested to provide more backup, more information about this agenda. So I'm at it, it's just a $2,313,000 for the programs that, so this money that is going to be requested to the hospital district is to help with the health department services that we have right now, Commissioner, and the Calderon Building, also for the staff that we have, the Calderon Building, the two positions that we have, and to cover also the mobile.
This is the annual fee that we do every year? Is this part of the annual fee?
That's correct, Commissioner, yeah. And so this is just to, just to get permission from the court to go before the board at the hospital district to make this request. The board, they're going to be meeting next week on Tuesday, 27, June 27 at noon.
Okay. Do you hear a motion on this?
So move.
Second.
Move, Commissioner Hernandez second, but Commissioner Amadis, you hear any discussion? Discussion, do any, but, favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Same sign, nay. No, no, I'm sorry. I meant, I said it the wrong way. My bad. Okay, agenda number seven, discuss and consider proving charity care funding relief, release And they go to, they go to the pinion. Deposit to Oasis County from the Texas Health and Human Services Commission according to the Corpus Christi Oasis County Public Health District Cooperative Agreement Amendment in 2022. And I think this is the one that, that they HS, HS, HS?
HH.
HH.
Yeah.
Submitted the payment to Oasis County instead of the health district.
That's correct, Commissioner. The health department, they work on this report. Used to be what it was called before the waiver. Now it's different. It's a charity care, it's a new program, and then so, and you can see the backup, everything it was submitted by the health department. So it was just like the funds were transferred to the county, but also they belong to the health department. So we just requesting, as you said, it was deposited on March 28th, and we just requesting if the court approves, just to transfer the funds where it belongs to the, to the health department.
Put it where it belongs, huh? So do I hear a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, do, hear any discussion, motion? Holding for the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Item number eight, discuss and consider approval of Hagerty Consulting, Inc., outstanding invoices for infrastructure investments and job at IIJA and any related matters. This is something that the ARPA Fund Director has been working on, Jeff? Oh, there you are.
Yes, sir, I'm here, Commissioner.
Okay, man. Jeff, you want to go ahead and give us a little, you know, a little enlightenment on this thing here, where we at? I know you and I have gone with this thing for, for a while now too, and Lulu, and I don't know what the outcome finally came up to after we met several times, so.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Basically, this item, there's, there's two different invoices attached to it. One of the items is basically invoicing us for work they Hagerty allegedly did on obtaining grants for the county. But if you look at it and the other documentation that's attached to it, these grants are mainly grants that would help school districts and water districts. They really don't benefit in Oasis County per se. So number one, they're off target on this. Number two, this was never discussed, to my knowledge, at least not recently, with this administration, with anyone here in Oasis County. We've talked to the different departments and no one has any knowledge of Hagerty contacting them and talking about these supposed grants that are out there. So that's one thing.
Was this signed by the last administration, by the judge?
It may have been. I honestly don't have any personal knowledge of that. I do know that the point of contact in the prior administration was the former judge. What conversations she had with Hagerty, I'm not aware of, so I really can't speak to that. However, if you look at these things, like I said, the first one has to do with the grants. The second invoice, the one for $600, has to do with documentation that they claimed that they provided per request from our office, from the county attorney's office. Well, there's several problems with that, in our opinion, one of which is, I don't think they should be charging us for documentation that, that we're due, one. Secondly, this is a work authorization for IIJA. It doesn't even fit in this category. It's in the wrong category. They're building in the wrong category. So for, for numerous reasons, Commissioners and Commissioners' Court, we're recommending that both of these be rejected and not paid.
Okay, so the request I thought I had was to just to table, now you're just going and making the request of not paying?
Right.
Did I get that request wrong?
I'm not, I'm not- Uh, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, Commissioner. I just was speaking to the facts, yes, sir.
No, it's fine. I thought that was what y'all wanna do, but that's fine. Um, I make the motion to reject, uh, reject these invoices.
I'm gonna deny payment as well. Um, still a concern about when we talked to Hagerty at one time, and they, uh, we asked some questions and they didn't wanna respond to us. Their only response to us was the only answer to the former county judge. So to me, that was not a good response. So, uh, no, I'm not agreeing to pay for this.
So you wanna second that, Commissioner?
Is there a motion for? Yeah.
Yeah, I second it.
There's a motion and a second?
And one, one question.
Question, Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner. And I was kind of referencing the previous administration, but there was, the invoice was February of twenty-twenty-three?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, and actually, that's another point. They sent all this information that you're looking at right here, I believe, of March seventh, they put it in the drop box. Their contract ended February twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three, so this is after the fact as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, but hold on a second, just to clarify this up though, the, the timeframe in which there's, they're billing us for is eleven twenty-six, twenty-two through twelve thirty of twenty-two.
That's accurate, but we didn't get this information until March.
John, just so you're, yeah, I think that was a little, I know we didn't get it till March, but they're claiming that it was during times back in twenty-two.
That's accurate.
Any, any other discussion?
As a call.
Holding for the motion to, sorry, Commissioner, wanna make the motion again?
Uh, just to deny payment was, based on county attorney's and the ARPA manager's advice to deny payment of these invoices.
Second.
No, holding for the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion pass.
Commissioner, uh, Scott Cross is here, they're ready to go back.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you, Lulu.
Thank you, uh, thank you, thank you, Jeff, Lulu, good job. Good job. Okay, uh, I see Scott in the back, so we're gonna go back to number four and five on the regular agenda.
Oh, okay, I'm ready if y'all are.
Lulu waiting for you?
Okay, so the Admiral's Road Doom Permit, um, that's ready to go. That's been vetted extensively. Uh, we took it to BMAC, we've sent out public notices of, of adjacent property owners three times now. Um, we've actually had meetings with the GLO and the engineer and applicant, and so this thing is ready to go. I recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Holding for the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, opposed, same sign, motion carried. About number five?
Number five, that's a, uh, a permit, that's the applicant had had an unpermitted violation on his property, and that is also the mitigation plan that's before you now, that's also been vetted and or, uh, put together in accordance with what the GLO wanted to see, so that one's ready to go.
And this meets all the legal requirements of the mitigation that is, is required.
Exactly.
As you said, the GLO's vetted this and they've signed off on this and everything's good to go. Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second, approve, uh, uh, any discussion on the motion? Holding for the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Apologize for being late. I've never seen y'all move this fast.
Time's changing, man. Holding for the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Same sign, opposed, same sign? Motion pass. Okay, number nine, regular, go back to the regular agenda, item number nine. Discuss and consider method of procurement, RFP, request for proposal for employee benefit management and consulting services. Authorize a person agent to publish a notice and adopt an order delegating evaluation authority to a selection committee. And, uh, Commissioner Ramares, this was here.
Yeah, we have Michael here just to talk more about the, about the item, that this is just an RFP for the consult, uh, for consulting services that we have. Opportunity to open up the process. Been twenty-something years since we've had this get out to the street, and, um, so everyone is available to apply for it and to bid for it.
Twenty years?
That's, that's the way I've understood it. We've had that consultant for twenty-plus years, so.
Who's, who do we?
So, Michael?
For twenty years? For twenty years?
It's Thomas Duran's. Okay, not twenty, I'm sorry.
No, 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 he's not been here twenty years.
Not twenty, fifteen.
He was done after, no, no, he was hired after we got here.
No, fifteen or seventeen, like oh-eight, oh-seven somewhere.
I don't think that's right either.
Yeah, it was, he was here with Lloyd.
Oh, he was here? Oh, we renewed it. He was here when.
He was here under Lloyd's.
Barbara.
Ten, twelve?
Two thousand and two, in two thousand, he was.
Seven, oh-seven, oh-eight, so I was just doing twenty to round up.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. I wouldn't, I just didn't think it was twenty, but.
Fifteen, seventeen, something like that. I don't have a calculator.
Yeah, so Tomas Duran's contract is a personal services contract.
Right.
Uh, so just to let the court know, um, that, uh, his contract is set to expire like it is every year at, uh, September thirty, and, uh, usually Commissioners Court Administration will bring, uh, a recommendation for contract renewal, uh, annually to the court to vote on, and then, um, but I just wanna let y'all know, this proposal is, is, uh, from Commissioner Maris, uh, requesting that we go out for RFP. But I wanna let you know, you have multiple methods you can choose to utilize to hire a new consultant if, if you wish to.
By the way that this is, you, let's, let's be accurate, though.
Yeah, I'm just being.
No, 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 hold on.
Sure.
This is not my item. On behalf of the insurance committee, which I've been charged with by the county judge, so I've spoken to the judge, who gave me the authority to do what's needed for the betterment of the health benefits for this county, so this is not my item.
Well, it's okay, I mean, it's okay.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, no, no. And the timing on this is that every year that we have this come up, it's tied at the same time that we can never, ever produce a new health insurance plan. The timing is off. That's why we're doing this now, Commissioners, because if we wait, we get, we get caught in the cycle where we have to renew, and we have to do this at the same time, so.
It's, it's totally fine. I just didn't think it was twenty years. That's all I brought up.
Oh-six, oh-six, so seventeen.
No, no, I, it's okay. Um, so then what, what, there's, there's alternate methods?
So, uh, just to let the court know, uh, if you choose to hire an individual to provide this service to the court, you can hire them under a personal services contract, and you're not required to go out for RFP. But an RFP is an approved method also. There's different ways depending on what direction the court wants to take with this.
But this is a, this is a, and doesn't he do it under his company?
No, he's an individual.
He is an individual?
Yeah, if you want to hire someone who works for a company, then the RFP method is the correct method to choose.
So, uh, like if a company wanted to apply, then we'd have to do the RFQ.
RFP.
RFP, if a, uh, if we wanted to do it just as individuals, so, but individuals could apply under this as well, right?
Yes.
Like anybody, like.
Independent.
Mr. Duran can reapply or whoever can reapply.
Whoever wants to can apply to that method. That works for anyone who wants to participate.
So this is probably the better catch-all in the sense that it allows more people to.
I think the RFP is the most fair method to provide wide open competition for the, for the position.
Okay. And then who, um?
And so the, if you're, are you aiming towards the, who the selection committee would be?
Yeah, I was just looking.
So in the order, it's got, um, the Commissioners Court Administration Manager, Director of Human Resources, and the County Auditor.
And, and, uh.
I mean, how many is that, Michael?
Three.
Are you saying, Mike, are you saying the County Auditor is Dale or County Auditor is Lisa?
Well, they're represented.
Where they appoint?
Yeah, it would, it would traditionally be Dale.
Right, and then who, who would be someone who, um, we can, we don't have, we can't put anybody on the court anymore. I'm just trying to think, who, who would be someone for, that's more insurance knowledgeable in the county on a staff since situation that handles, uh, who would that, would there be someone suggested on that one maybe too? Risk, I don't know if risk management does that?
The only one closest to this particular line of business is myself, and I'm not on any selection committees. I'll be participating as a, um, facilitator of the meeting.
Well, and, and the reason I'm asking on this one is because this is a hard topic for me, right? And I've done this now a long time, and this, this insurance stuff gets really complex, and so I'm not trying to be in any way, shape or form, um, not saying that the people that you've suggested are not good, because that's not what I'm saying, but to have someone on this particular committee with a level of expertise related I think going to help make a better selection, and I don't know who that is, and so I don't have a problem with the, with the concept, whoever's idea it is, it's great. Doesn't matter if it was your John or judges, I don't care.
What about Mr. Timothy? Do you have any knowledge of insurance?
He's already.
He'll be on there.
He is part of that.
He's already?
Yeah.
He's already in the committee.
Yeah, he's in the committee, and he has, under his, uh, department, the benefits, uh, position.
No, I get it, I'm just.
Yeah.
There, there was a lady that worked there, Lindon Moon, didn't she handle insurance?
That's correct.
Is she, is she already retired, or she wanted to retire? She retired?
She retired, yes, sir.
I, I'm just looking for a little more expertise, I think, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I don't know how much experience Dale has with insurance or respectfully or I day, and I don't mean that rudely, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to find some, some committee members that might have more expertise.
Yeah, each of us are basically, um, have some exposure to this, but no, no one of us has the whole picture besides Tomas.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, what you cannot.
Um, and I'm fine that with, with Mr. Salee on there, I think he's got it, but I mean, so I'm not, uh, I'm just, I'd like to just.
You wanna say something, Salee?
Figure out how we can.
Yes, sir, I have significant experience in, um, insurance benefit plans.
No, no, you're good, but the other two don't. That's what I'm saying, and I'm not being mean or anything, the other two don't, you do, and that means we have one that does and the other two that don't. So I'm a little, that means it all falls on you, and I don't, I, I just, I'm trying to, I don't know who to put on this committee. I, I think the HR director's great, I'm just not sure that, that the correct committee for this one is the county manager and the auditor, because they just don't have that expertise and.
I mean, we, we, we know about it, we don't know the details, you know? Uh, we rely when we have questions, I do rely a lot on, on TAC, we, we have questions about benefits, they're a great, 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 um, resource.
And, and this is gonna be mainly scoring, I mean, unfortunately, I mean, the policy we have in place, I think, is a bad policy, and I voted for it, so I'm gonna say it was a bad policy. I mean, I know what the intent was to try to remove the politics out of this, but, uh, and I'm not saying, like, I want another meeting, like, I want another hole in the head, so I'm not saying I wanna be there. But I've, I've been on city, you know, CCISD Insurance Committee, been on committee here with Judge Neal, under Judge Canales, and now Judge Scott. Um, we need, I think, somebody at that level. It, it could be maybe another department head, maybe, I don't wanna volunteer, but you know, someone, someone like that at, at a high level that manages a lot of employees, that maybe kinda gets it. I think Mr. Salee as a lead will be great, Michael guiding them will be fine. It, it's just gathering the information, it's not like it's subjective, like they get to pick their preference. They're just gonna come up with the, with a grading rubrics, pretty much Michael Wright, and they're gonna say, now score. Now that does become a little subjective, but it's pretty much yes or no on those responses. Do you check off yes? I mean, are you, are you a one-person firm or plus one? You may have to check yes or no on that. I mean, it's, it's, there's not too much give to it. Is that right, Michael?
Man, I totally disagree on that one, John, I'm sorry. I, this one is a hard one because how do you, because to me, it doesn't matter if it's one or ten or nine, I mean, this is such a different, this is such a different animal that I think it makes a huge difference on the scoring if, if you don't have a good knowledge of, of, of this insurance and how they're gonna do things, and I, I think, um, I, I think this one is very specialized, and I really have a hard time with not putting the right members of the committee on this one, because I think you have, and I'm great, I mean, what Mr. Salee's won, and Michael can facilitate, but he's not, he can't score, he can't, and, and, and I mean, so.
But he'll, he'll help them come up, I think, with some good guidance to follow.
Gotta be careful with that. I mean, he really is not so.
Yeah, I, I would only be there to answer any factual questions.
Yeah, he can't really guide.
I can't give any opinions in my, in my role now.
So you're telling me that the grading rubrics is all gonna come from the committee itself, from Mr. Salee and the other members?
We've been in that mode since December, uh, with the purchasing, so every, uh, RFP that we brought before the court, purchasing has had no vote on any of those.
And I mean, how, so how do y'all even come up with the rubric?
So, uh, we were fortunate, uh, uh, to receive a copy of, uh, other, uh, proposal, uh, that was drafted by CCISD. So we're gonna review that one. We may, uh, pull some other ones from different counties.
So what about, does it have to be someone from the county? Could we put someone like, could we ask somebody from CCISD or someone to help us with something like this that has expertise?
The doctor from the city?
I think we can receive, um, expert guidance, like, to participate, sit in and review the materials, and provide advice like we've done when we have complex engineering projects, and we had engineers sit in on the meeting, but it was county officials that were responsible to supply the vote.
But I'm saying, is there anything that says we can't go outside? I'm asking if that's a, like a rule or a law that we couldn't, because I, I'm just telling you, I'm gonna need a lot of help on this one, and I don't think this one is easy. I really don't, I just don't.
It's not easy, it's very multifaceted. There's a lot of, uh, things that purchasing receives from this person, but there's a ton of things that goes on between, uh, that individual and, say, individuals in the county, employees that need help with, uh, particular claims. The HR office, uh, does a lot of work with him, uh, the auditor's office as well, and the financial side, um, there's just, it's, it's a, it's a huge task.
Yeah, I just don't think this is gonna be.
And this person's responsible to go and evaluate all of the potential bidders that we get or proposers for the different, um, health services. So we're gonna want someone who's in that field, um, and with years of experience, you know, we're not gonna wanna, uh, be a guinea pig with someone brand new.
I can tell you how it, it was done years past, and maybe, uh, this is obsolete, but years past, it was the Mr. Runfield from the auditors, Sonny Johnson from purchasing, okay, and then there was, uh, one department head, and then there was one employee that would, you know, do this. And you would get feedback from the employees as well, and I think having a day there, I mean, uh, would be knowledgeable, could see, I mean, let's face it, you gotta have good common sense to begin with. I mean, it's just like if you were buying insurance for yourself, you would want the best, what is best for you and your family, right? So why not consider county employees as your family and try and get the best thing for them? Thank you.
Uh, so Commissioners, my recommendation would be a disinterested, disinterested party, such as a, uh, employment law attorney that specializes in benefit administration, to really be able to be our guide and make sure that each one of the plans that we enroll in really cover our needs, and we're assured of the legal ramifications of such policies. Something to consider. That, that may be the best route considering the policy that we have. I, I, I think, like what Commissioner was saying, we need somebody who, who feels it, though. We need somebody on there that they're a direct user of the insurance plan, and we know so many don't. And I think we can make this a robust plan eventually, once we get in, uh, a consultant that can look at all the options out there, so.
There, I, I would suggest alternatively as well, that the court does not have to delegate this authority to a selection committee.
That's a good idea, but, but, it's a good idea, but, I still am gonna need a lot of help. I mean, I'm just, I mean, look, I'm.
But just in terms of, um, what I'm thinking of is if, if there's, uh, multiple individuals and you wanna actually hear from them and get a feeling for, you know, who we're signing up for, because otherwise you're just gonna hear a recommendation from the committee, right? And you won't have, um, you know, a chance to ask all those questions you may have.
Before, maybe when Judge Neal was here, we used to do that, where they would come before us, two or three that were interested, you know, and, uh, and tell us how they're gonna, what kinda plan they have, what they're gonna provide, you know, so we heard it from all three of them, you know.
That's not a bad idea. What if we didn't delegate?
And then you went back and, I guess, and kinda.
I mean.
Evaluated on that, on that, on that information.
You're right, that we don't have to delegate. We could just, we could just put it out and do it ourselves, and then we, and then maybe we. And then we, and then maybe we, and then we bring in Mr. Sully as, as a reference and maybe that lawyer, but maybe not, well, maybe we could do it with, with just him. Like, you know, answering the questions and that's not a bad idea, Michael, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just not, I, I think, I, I'm, I just don't. I, I just, I, I don't strongly believe that this is gonna require a lot of help and I, I mean, it's gonna, I'm gonna require a lot of help, I'm not saying everybody else is, y'all only get it, but. Um, I, I, maybe we just don't delegate, that's not a bad idea for now. I mean, go out for the RFP and just, we, we, we decide it.
Could, can we change the policy, Jenny, to include like maybe say the judge? I mean, I would think of anyone would be.
She doesn't, I mean, but I, I can't speak for her, but I don't know that her background is in insurance either.
Well, I mean.
But if we all do it, John, then what's, what would be the problem? Just delegate it, we don't delegate.
You need one of us.
It's all of us, I know it's all of us. We just do it, we get the proposals and we just evaluate the proposals as a court in open and like Joe said, they can come in and we can talk to them and.
That's question.
I'm not, I don't wanna do this all the time because we don't have time, but on this one, I don't.
And I, and I'm not certain how many applicants we might get, if, if we perceive that there's gonna be quite a few. Um, maybe the committee can shortlist, you know, weed out.
So.
Or use of.
But if we were to bring everybody forward like that, does it still RFP or does it change to some then else RF whatever? Q or RFI or?
Well, the RFP method is just how I put out a bid, that doesn't concern who the committee members are, the committee members is defined by the order.
What I'm saying, if we start bringing them in and sque- screening them that way, that doesn't, it doesn't change.
Um, in fairness, to me, I'd like a little bit of time to visit with Jenny and make sure that, that this uh, proposed method will be o- okay. In terms of, I know it's okay for you not to delegate authority, that's no problem and it, and at that point, I could bring the RFP document to the court. So you could see what's gonna be in the RFP before we release it and you can approve it of what's gonna go out on the street and then.
Could we just do it where we don't delegate, we do this today so we can get the ball rolling, we don't delegate the authority, you go back and talk to Jenny. And then we can decide on how we weed out later?
Sure.
I mean, is that okay, does that, because I know, I mean, I think John's right, I mean, the timing on this always catches us, so this is a good thing that it, what's on here.
Yeah, and if we're, if we're, if you're, if we're considering this method, need to get on it right now, because uh, time is of the essence.
This one's gonna take a little more time.
And so the other way would be to do it on RFQ and just invite people to submit or professional services thing? Could we do it that way without doing all this or I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure.
Well, RFQ and RFP is gonna be pretty much the same boat in terms of time it takes and how we go about selecting.
But the professional services deal.
But the professional services one is, that's if, if y'all can identify someone in the, that you trust to do this work and.
Could we do that with a, with a, could we, could you do a professional services like a hybrid where we said, we send something out and everybody. We still accomplish what we wanted, but not have to go through all this? I mean, I get on a, on a professional services deal, it's normally we just pick one, but we could, we say, okay, everybody on the court, submit one. And everybody, could you do it like that? I'm just trying to, because I don't want to get caught up in the timing on this, I mean, is that legal? To where we said, all right, um, let's do it as a professional services and everybody on the court submit one.
Like a nomination?
One person for suggestion and we all discuss that person or persons, all five, could we do that? I mean.
If you can pick one, then your process of picking one, I don't, I don't think you're hindered.
Right, because per- professional service, I'm sorry, personal services is not required competitive bidding, so you don't have to worry about that piece.
John, what do you think about that?
I, I, I think we, we go with, with HR director and the, and the court making the decisions, I think that that should help us move fast enough. It's gonna be a lot of work for us, but hey, if we're all willing to take it and then it's, it's evened out, it's not preference to one uh, member of the court or the other. I'm, I'm in favor of that, I think that that would work.
So you, uh, so you don't want to do the professional services where I'll nominate, you don't like that one?
Well, the professional services is, I want to say the problem, I think, you know, this, this is not about Mr. Duran, right? And that's why I don't want to make it seem like it's coming from me, like I'm, I don't, not happy with Mr. Duran, I think he's done a good job for us. Uh, but it's just, it's his time, I think, to put it out there. And so anytime we do professional services, there's always that opportunity, the way it's worded, if I'm correct, we can just say, here's our person. And then we just totally kind of went around this whole process that we're trying to set up, which is let's, let's vet my out, so.
Well, that's why I was suggesting, no, yeah, that's what I was suggesting is not going around it and just picking one, that we all, everybody on the court nominate one, so we'd have five to pick from. We'd have, in other words, it, it'd be a faster, leaner process than having to go through all this. Jenny says we could do it, we all nominate one company, one person, whatever, and then we bring those five in.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna nominate a company, it won't work.
Okay, person, fine.
If it, it has to be an individual who's capable of contracting um, by themselves with the county, if you're trying to pursue personal services.
So, so for times say, can we move forward and approve the RFP right now and then come back later, maybe at the next meeting? Give us enough time to answer any questions or, or any policy questions mainly between you and between uh, legal, between Jenny and her team? Can we do that as far as just support moving forward on the RFP today and then pick?
Yeah, I think giving us the guidance will be good and, and what I'd like to do is if we make changes to the document itself, we'll bring that back on the next court, just to record it into the record.
I did, can we get that on the next agenda then? Make sure that hopefully if this passes right now, the RFP, then we come back and we, we pick the committee at the next meeting.
We have, we have, let's make it into a motion, we're gonna make it a motion.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
We just.
So a motion to, to approve the RFP and to place on that, the next agenda of selecting a committee.
Oh, we're not gonna do the, I thought we wanted to do the committee with us and Sully, you just said, I thought you just said that was it.
Well, I mean, it gives us time because I, I, I really do, I mean, I think, I think in some, I, I get what the concept was as far as policy and I don't want to put it on the policy. But before we were able to kind of pick specialty, I, I mean, I think maybe there's even a chance that we can pick an employee, someone from management. I mean, there's all kinds of options, but maybe, maybe if we just give ourselves, what, we meet again on the 12th? So it's a little bit of time, but we can at least pick the committee then, like let us vet it ourselves, right? We may want to put ourselves, maybe we just feel the five we have up here is good enough along with HR and we go there. But it gives us some time to say if there are, if there is somebody out there that we want to pick, we can maybe come up with some suggestions to do that.
Okay, but that just means we can't go out, that does delay, you're delaying.
No, we, we can still start the RFP, that's the main part, isn't it?
Well, I, I could start writing the RFP, you know, the documents, I can't release it out to the public until we get that settled.
Yeah, and until the order has the committee in it, he can't, we, we're not officially, right?
Yes.
I just, sometimes to me it's more effective when they're gonna stand in front of you, telling you what they're gonna do, what they're gonna provide, you know?
I really like that, I like that.
Because I mean, I tell you what, you can hold them to, to the chief, they don't, you know, they're on the line and bring them back and said, I thought you said you were gonna do this, you're gonna do that. So sometimes it's good to know what, what they're giving you, what, what the promise they're gonna do and um, other than just a contract that we never, we never saw, but. But anyway, I mean, that's, but to me, I, I just like the fact that they come before us, so they can be part of a, us when we make the decisions, you know?
I, I agree, I, I'm just telling you that committee's gonna be a waste of time for me because I'm gonna, I'm gonna redo everything that the committee's gonna want to do. So and, because I, I'm not, I can't, I'm, I'm not knowledgeable enough on this, as much as I've tried, as much as I've done this and as much as I've. So I don't want to waste the committee's, an, an, an outside committee's time when I'm gonna want to bring everything back into the court anyway. So that's all I was trying to come up with was just do it with the court doing it and do the RFP and put the committee as, as us. But if you want to wait on the committee, that's fine, but I'm just telling you that's, I'm not gonna change between now and July 12th, but that, but that's just, I'm just one vote. So if nobody else wants to do it that way, then I can be outvoted and I don't get my feelings hurt, I move on.
I like that.
Draw my motion, make a motion that we approve the RFP and uh, select Commissioners' Court.
Just don't delegate, wouldn't delegate.
Submit Commissioners' Court as a selection committee with uh, assistance and direction from Mr. Saleh.
That, would he be just part of the committee, right? Or he would, or how would we do that?
He's part of the five to make the decision.
He would be our advisor, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, y'all are the voting members and he would be the advisor.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, John, you got the motion?
Yes, I hope that was the right motion.
You got it, did you get it?
Let's.
Motion made by Commissioner Mares, second by Commissioner Chesney, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
It's a good item, John, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing it.
Motion pass. Though number 10, uh, agenda, item 10, discussing consider authorizing payment of $4,167 to Noyce County Drainage District. Number two, uh, for the City of Driscoll Drainage Improvement Project. Think Commissioner Mares, this was uh, something you get put in there?
Well, it, it's obviously, this is, Driscoll is now in Commissioner Nanda's precinct, but when it was in mine, um, I had supported the drainage district. And a project that they did for the City of Driscoll, so this is just catching up with the invoice that uh, had been presented to us back in, in 2021. And had not been paid, so it's just a formality to get it paid and.
Instead of you, uh, yeah.
And it coming, I, I believe it should be coming out of my funds, is that correct?
Instead of you paying for it, Commissioner.
I'm saying it's okay, he's paying for it, no, no, it's coming from my funding.
Orlando's gonna pay for it?
No, 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 it's, it's coming from my funds, yes.
Okay. Funding sources will be prison three, right? Prison three will be the funding source?
Yes, sir.
From your special revenue fund, sir?
For special revenue.
All right, thank you.
Carry your motion.
So.
Second.
Motion moved second, wanting for the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Discussing consider upcoming Commissioners' Court meeting, do you uh, budget workshops, dates and related matters? And I think July 10th and 13th are, are m- marked for uh, budget, is that correct? Eighty?
Yes, sir.
July the 10th and July 13th, are those for budget?
Oh, that's correct, Commissioner, um, uh, so today we have just uh, 13 departments that they want to go, uh, come before the court to discuss. So we have two days so far, so we, July uh, the 10th and the 13th. Uh, since we have just not that many departments, I, I don't know if the court just wished to have just one.
Day.
For this, for the workshops, Commissioners?
Okay, wait, yeah, I'm looking, trying to look, hold on, okay, so, um.
Because we had it scheduled on a Monday and a Thursday and we have a court.
And we have court on Wednesday, that's correct.
I'd like to try to squeeze it down to one day.
That's why I would recommend, because we don't have that many departments and just, uh, so which day would you like to, we have the Monday and the Thursday.
Monday and Thursday.
We have the 10th and Thursday, the 13th.
I would say Thursday for me, I don't, anybody else, whatever, I mean, I'm, whatever, my majority, I don't care.
That's, I mean.
Thursday would be fine.
That's, that's fine.
And so the motion would be to cancel the July 10th meeting and, and put everything on July 13th.
For a budget.
For budget workshop, sorry.
Second.
For the workshops.
That was a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Excuse me, Commissioners, I think that Dale might be out of the office that day, I mean, if you don't mind me sitting in his place.
You said you was just as good.
Thank you.
Has Dale been gone?
Thank you.
Better tell Dale, he better hurry back, I'm kidding.
He should be back Monday.
I got you.
Okay.
We welcome him back.
So we got it covered, okay?
Okay, yes, all right.
Okay, and, and, and I will tell you that the interesting part about that is gonna be, I'm anxious to see what those budget workshops look like after we get our numbers because.
That's correct.
It's gonna be real interesting to see if anybody wants to come make a presentation, if the numbers are as bad as we think they are. So we, we, we might not have the need for budget workshops at all, but I don't say that lightly either, that's gonna be an interesting budget, to say the least.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now as far as the discussion, consider upcoming court meeting, so we're using the July 13th?
I don't know if we voted.
Or voted already?
And Commissioner, just to point out, um, I don't know if um, from the Health Department, um, they would like if the court can have a special meeting to address their budget. I believe that, um.
I don't know.
So it's other request from the Health Department because the, the next agreement um, is due for July 1st, for the one for the, we're gonna request the funds before the Health, uh, the Hospital District. So they want to know if the court is gonna agree to, to with the 1.8 million that they requesting.
Well, and again, I, I've, I'm meeting with, I'm, I'm sure, I think she's been requesting meetings for all of us, I'm meeting with the Health Director on Friday. But I don't know, I don't know how, like I don't know how we can do that.
Yeah, and that's my concern, because we don't even know yet until we're gonna get the funds for the Health, for the Hospital District, so that's step number one, go before the Hospital District, right? Because that's why we, the, the court use the funds for, to pay for the Health Department.
My deal was, my deal, what I talked, I, I don't think we can do it sooner than the 12th meeting, we just need to see what we have, what we.
I, I totally agree, but I just voicing the request from the, from the Health Department.
And it's the same, I mean, I don't know how um, I, and, and I don't know if the Hospital District, how they're gonna be affected. Or if they're gonna be affected by this upcoming potential shortfall.
That's correct.
Because I think they are countywide and if these appraisals with, with the fight between the um. appraisal district and the refineries, that's got to affect their budget, so I'm kind of curious as to.
Yeah, we don't know until.
If they're gonna want to.
That's correct.
Agree to this, like, so I, I, I'm a little, I've never been in a budget like this potentially, like never, and I've done a lot of budgets for city and county. And I've never seen anything like this potentially, so I'm a little wary about approving anything that's increase of anything until we get those certified.
No, that's correct, yeah, we don't even know how the Hospital District is gonna, to request, I don't know what they're gonna say on the 27th. And we don't know what the values are gonna be next month on, when we have those values.
I think we just need to stick to the 12th meeting and see what happens.
Right, because I, and I'm not, I don't want to, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be obvious.
Right now the meetings we're looking at July 13th for budget and the regular meeting for the July 12th.
That's correct.
So July 12th and 13th, right?
Oh shit, we do it the 10th, then since, we want to go day, we want to go back, I forgot about back to back, we have a meeting on the 12th. We want to go 12th and 13th or, okay, all right.
Well, see the way we do, the 10th would be the same thing, right?
Well, it'd be a day in between, but it's fine, whatever, okay.
Whatever, whatever you want to do, whatever your motion?
I'm okay, whatever, if, if that works for anybody.
Yeah, we already have a second.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, you.
But do we include the 12th and 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the 12th.
You canceled July 10th.
Right, we have the 12th and 13th.
12th and 13th.
12th is the regular meeting and 13th is a budget meeting.
Yeah.
Right, did we, did we vote on that, on the motion?
No, we haven't voted on that. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, okay, motion carried.
Are we doing the um?
Edward, are you, are they here?
Yes, sir.
They're right.
Okay, we go back to um, item number.
Three.
Three.
Great.
And it says here, uh, discussing consider appointing Noyce County Committee to negotiate a proposed license and agreement with Yobi Park. Related to potential modification and licenses of the ballpark in the Richard and Borger Regional Fairgrounds and related matters.
So Commissioners, we've been meeting with Leon McLendon, McLaughlin, excuse me, from the president of Yobi Park. And with Commissioner Mares and with the group of us to kind of figure out what is the best avenue or how are we going to roll with this? So we've, we brought Mr. McLaughlin today with a presentation so he can give you a brief preview of what we're looking at and what we're looking forward to, Mr. McLaughlin.
So is this, but I mean, I just got handed something that says it's confidential, so I'm kind of confused.
The, the version that's gonna be on the screen is an older version, so they are fine with that, it's, that's the newer version that they don't want released?
Okay, well, so.
Should we have this, Jenny?
Why do we have it?
Yeah, I don't.
This proprietary, I mean, do we want it, do we?
I'm gonna give this back, because I don't want this getting out inadvertently, so I'm gonna, yeah, yeah. Can, if you, I don't know where these D, I don't, I don't want the confidential one. And maybe in closed session or something if we need to do it, but I don't want there to be any doubt of that something got out, that we, we got it out, we don't want to do that to you.
Would you know what's the old one?
Good morning to you, thank you for having us here. As Ed said to you earlier, my name is Leon McLaughlin, I'm the president of Yeo Ball.
Wait, could you pause, pause please, we just lost a quorum, not your fault.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Leon McLaughlin from Yeo Ball Yard Incorporated, we're a Houston-based company. And as he discussed earlier, we have been meeting. and as he discussed earlier, we have been meeting and talking about the potential for your area over there, about the Richard Borshard Stadium. And the idea is because you all know baseball contracted a lot of the things that reference to minor league teams, and when it did, it left cities and counties with some properties that are assets that are sitting there but not being used. And we're a company that is looking at that kinda thing, to take that thing, to put it into something that is useful and a money-making venture for your county. As we look at what we have presented to you as a basic thing of a proposal, now this thing is really moved, and I apologize to the court for our being here late, because I thought we were supposed to be at ten, not at nine. If we had known we would be at nine, we would've been at nine, I didn't know that. But from looking at what we have proposed to you now is the idea to look at this, to determine if there's a possibility of revitalizing your area by putting the Yobi Park comp facility there to do those things for you, that what you're looking to do. And then we got into this thing a little bit late, because I found out about this facility, and I said, wait a minute, if there's a facility down there that they are being, sitting there and has been sitting there for some period of time that's not permanently being used, why not look at it and try to remodel that facility and make it into what we are trying to do? We're looking at building a new one of these facilities in our colony, right outside of Houston, as opposed to building from a stadium. When I looked at your stadium, I said, let's look at it and see if there are possibilities. We looked at it, and there are some possibilities. What we had given out to you was some of the proposed things that we possibly could do with it and make it work. I also apologize to the court for information that was let out about a couple, three weeks ago. I did not know that we were gonna jump the gun that fast, in terms of being out on the news and that kinda thing. I didn't really realize that was being happening, but it did. So now persons in the area know about the possibility, but this is a thing that, as I said in our meeting at that time, we do not have an agreement, we do not have anything other than a hope to look at a facility and try to develop that facility into something that you can use for your area. As you look at what we have put together, and I don't know how to move this thing, or should I move it, or is it moved by somebody else? To the next slide? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. You can go to the next slide, okay? As you see what we have here, this is just something to show you as the way, as a possibility of doing it, and you can go on to the next slide as well, go to the next slide. That's just some of right there, what is the possibility of doing with this. We take some of the stadium seats, and then we put a cover in there, and they have those bays there. Go to the next slide. And that's composite there of the thirty-six bays, and then you can go on to the next slide, slide, okay? And this is our vision in terms of where it would look, one on top of the other one, you got one on the bottom, one on the second, and the reason being because you have the stadium seats that are already there. And what we have, what I've given to you, and I don't wanna get into detail on that, because you said not to bring out, is that it will see the detail, how those things are actually meshed in together. So go to the next slide then. And that's the end of it, because basically our goal is to revitalize that area and make it into a promising area that can give you some income and bring some other things to the area. We believe that Yobi Park is a facility that can do that. And as you look at what we've done, Yobi Park is taken off a proven model, that is Top Golf. Top Golf is a model, if you all heard of, that really focuses on golf. We're focusing on baseball, softball, hitting a batted ball from a tee, and a person can go, and in fact, I thought about it, if we had had the facility already built, I would invite you gentlemen out, and let's get some of your frustration out on the ball. But since we don't have that yet, we can't do it. But that would be the idea to come out there, that you could hit the ball and then take some frustration out on that ball, and hit a homerun, or hit a double, or triple, or whatever it is, but it would be recorded as you hit the ball, there it is being recorded as to what you did. You got a single, you got a double, you got a triple, you got a homerun, and as you go through it, the scores are there, and it determines where it is, and you can do that a little kid, older person, like anybody, lady, female, whatever, it doesn't matter. But that's the idea, to have a facility that brings that there, brings food, brings drinks, and give you fun and family entertainment, it's a family fun destination, that's the purpose of this. Any questions, gentlemen?
So how do we plan to build this thing?
We plan to take what you already have and remodel what you have already.
And where do we get the remodeling fund?
We will provide the remodeling funds.
So you're saying you bring in how much to the table?
We bring in the dollars to the table. At this point, I don't know the exact figure on dollars, because we have not determined that this is the one that we want to use in the final plan to do it, but basically, we're looking at about seven million dollars to remodel that. We don't wanna go past seven million dollars to do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll open up the discussion, so anybody else got anything you wanna say?
I have a question.
Sure, sir.
How did you come to find out about our facilities?
I found out about this facility from a person who used to work in this area down here, and he was working in Houston, in Fort Bend County, and I was looking at the Fort Bend County area for a possible putting facility, and he was telling me about this place that had one here. I had also looked at facilities across the country, that there are stadiums that are vacant quite a few places, and he just confirmed that this one was right here, looking at the possibility, and that's why I just went and looked at it close, because you were closer to Houston. But there are a lot of other facilities across the United States that we were looking at as well.
Is there a way we can know this person's name, or is that?
If you'd like, I, the, the person that gave me that information, I find his name going away from me, but he did work in your county as the, um, economic development person, and he's in Fort Bend County now.
Economic development.
But your stadium is on a list of vacant stadiums across the country, and it was that.
So what are you, what are you asking the county? What, what?
I'm asking for the county to allow us an opportunity to look at and to develop more plans for this, and then come back to you and present our proposal to you that where we can develop this for you.
For, how about funding? Do we have to put in the funding?
No, you will not have to put any funding.
So, um, and I guess this is a Michael, or an Edward, or someone, how do we, uh, I don't know how we do this with just one person, should we not have put out RFQs or RFPs, or, I'm, I'm a little caught off guard by this one, and, and I mean, I guess usually we wouldn't wanna spend a lot of, um, staff and time if we didn't know that where the funding source was coming from and things of that nature, so it's a great concept, I'm just trying to figure out how it would.
Well, Commissioner, what we've been using is the licensing agreement model, like the one that we use over there at the swimming pool, Parker Pool. So we come up, we, we vet whoever we're, is looking for, and there's not that many people looking for an empty ball field stadium. And we vet them, and we choose them essentially, and that's how we go through the process. So through this model, this allows us to be able to assure ourselves, I mean, the, the committee's not a, once it's established, it's not gonna end up with a resolution that we end up, yes, giving it to them. It's just, we want to explore the opportunity to see the financing, the funding, what's gonna take, or what are the modifications? We've got an idea, but we don't know what the modifications are gonna be made to the stadium, the time length of the actual, uh, agreement as well, are all these things that are in play. With this, this instrument, the way that we do the licensing agreements, we're able to choose that. And now that the word's gotten out, everybody may have a different idea as far as how to do this same project, and, uh, that's, that's the only other thing.
Okay, so, and, to me, this brings about a bigger picture conversation that I've thrown out before that we haven't had, which is, you know, do we even keep this ballpark and, and not, you know, knock it down and repurpose the land, and, and so I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna, you know, we haven't had that conversation as a court, because it's a, it's a, you know, it's an uncomfortable conversation, and unfortunately now, it, it comes up because this project has come before, because I don't wanna waste this, this nice man's time if this court's going to look at doing something completely different. I don't wanna waste staff's time if we don't have, if, if there's not a specific amount of funds available, and, and, you know, what I'll reference is my, my really horrible, horrible experience with the old courthouse, where we had this great fund, we thought we had all this mechanism, and it was gonna be great and wonderful, and they didn't have any, you know, but they ended up coming up with the funds, and I'm not suggesting, I'm sure they can come up with the funds, but right now, there's not funding available. So I don't, I don't wanna go through all that and spend a, a year of everybody's time, and then we decide we're gonna, because I, I, that's pretty valuable land out there that if you repurposed it, meaning, you know, and there isn't much use for it right now, I mean, let's call it like it is, I don't know, the baseball, nobody's even renting it for baseball stadiums anymore. I mean, it's sitting there doing nothing, I mean, we may just need to tear that thing down and repurpose the land, so I don't wanna waste his time, their time, your time, our time, 'cause we haven't had that big-picture conversation on what we really wanna do with that, that area, and we've also got some other land out there. I mean, that could, you know, if you knocked all that down and, and, and made all that vacant land again, what could you do with that? So I just don't wanna waste their time without, now, if they came in and said, hey, we got seven million bucks in the bank, we're ready to go, okay, that's a different deal, but I don't, I wouldn't, I mean, that's, that's not a realistic expectation either, so.
Well, the thing is, I can't answer for the court, so I don't know.
Well, but I mean, you're, somebody.
All I can say is that this is an opportunity that we have. Mr. McLaughlin is interested in the property, we're not gonna take a year, I think maybe sixty days is something that's reasonable.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I can't speak for Mr. McLaughlin, but I think that's what he's looking for.
Sir, do you have other facilities, uh, working right now that, that you operate?
We don't operate any facility, this is the first one that we're gonna renovate.
So is the seven million dollars that you've indicated, is that at, at hand? Do you have that funding available now?
We have that funding asset available, right. The idea to, to me, I agree with you, sir, that I wouldn't wanna, unless the county decides that this is what we are looking at, and that's, my idea is the same, to look at it and do it, if you're not, I would rather not know that now is my, I mean, know it now, 'cause that way, we want something now, because to waste time, as you said, then you determine, oh, no, we don't wanna do it, we don't wanna tear it down, I agree. That's a good decision, if that's what they wanna do, because I wouldn't wanna spend forty-five days looking at the possibility, if you know you was gonna tear it down, that's a waste of time.
No, and you said.
And I agree with you.
You said you have the seven million dollars?
We have the money to do that, and if the county said, let us look at the process of doing it, putting it together, we would put the project together. But if you plan to tear it down, and you think you're gonna tear it down, I would rather say, okay, go ahead and tear it down, we move on to other places, 'cause we can go to other places.
And, and I mean, if you have verifiable funds that, that, that you can, and I'm, and I'm not, I, I don't know you, and I'm not trying to be, if you have some sort of verifiable funds that you could provide the county some, that you had those funds available?
Well, do you want us to do that before we have an agreement with you to do it, or you want us to do that after we have? 'Cause what we're looking at now, if we had some kinda plan, that we are going ahead to do that, then we could do those kinds of things, but if we are not, and then you say, no, you're not going to do that, then.
To me, before, to me, before we would enter into any kind of, like, today, the agenda item is discuss and consider.
Right.
Appointing a committee to, to look at a licensing agreement, before, I would wanna go into that, I'd want verifiable funds that said, here's our verifiable seven, me, I don't know about the rest.
Right.
I wanna know, we have seven million dollars, and that you've got the funds, and you're ready to go, because.
But I don't think it's just a seven million dollars.
No, it's not just, that would just be one thing.
Yeah, because to me.
Right.
To me, it looks something that's, can be real, to me, I like, I like the idea, but I mean, if something, we're gonna start tearing down something, and something, something happens, and then we, we stop, how is Noises County gonna put it back together again? Or, so you might have seven million, seven million dollars to work with. My question would be, can you put up maybe three, four million dollars in a bond, so in case something does happen, Noises County can back up, say, we got, that belongs to Noises County, so we can fix it the way it was. We don't wanna be left with something that's been done or have done, something happened, you never know, we've been there, we've been there before. So, uh, we just wanna make sure we have those monies locked in in a, in some kind of a bond, and that, that if something happens, Noises County owns those, the money.
I, I would, before, if we entered into an agreement, we would, or whatever you all say for us to do, and you give us the guidelines to follow, then we will follow those guidelines, and if those are the guidelines, then that's what we would do, and we come back to you with whatever we plan to do. I agree with that.
Edward, on, on this proposal, I mean.
I'm sorry.
There, there's a lot of events or groups that we have met with over the years, and because it's literally right down the road from my office, so I, I'm privy to a lot of those, but, I mean, we've had licensing agreements with minor league, uh, minor league baseball teams, like independent affiliates, um, we have the, um, the, the car racing that's been out there, I mean, there, there's a lot of events, and, and so we've done it through licensing, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, from women's football to soccer, we had semi-pro soccer in there for a while, we've had, like you're saying, the different events in the parking lot, we actually are, uh, holding off on a winter event that's, uh, that they want to hold in the parking lot, set up during, uh, Thanksgiving, and then just have cars drive through the parking lot, and that's, that's something that's on hold based on, on what we discuss and what we decide here today. So, yes, sir, we do a lot of licensing agreements.
And, and, and I think, the reason why we're here, and I agree, and apologize to Mr. McLintock, uh, McLinton.
McLaughlin.
McLaughlin, sorry, um, is that this item kinda came out probably before your comfort and before ours, because we could've made sure the due diligence was done, but now that the cat's out of the bag, so to speak, you know, we gotta just address it, people are excited. We, we gotta protect against what I know some of my colleagues are saying, against that heartburn that we've had over the years in Robstown, where we've had a great facility, and it succeeded, and then it, it failed, it went away, and, and this is really a unique idea, and that's, I think, part of maybe what licensing agreements are, Edward, is, is those individuals, those entrepreneurs, those who are kinda thinking outside the box, and seeing opportunity, and approach us in, in a way that we're, we're not having to go through a formalized process. I agree, we may need to do that, uh, eventually. I know, I'm personally, um, pretty much at my end as far as how many times do we try, uh, but when you get a unique idea like this, an opportunity that doesn't come around very often, and, and I'm sure, even though this was probably a problem to you first, Leon, as far as getting this information out to the public, I'm sure there's probably been other communities that have reached out to you now.
Right.
Because of this, so this is not just about Noises County, Robstown, going out for that, and I'm sure there's been others to communities that said, hey, we love your idea, and by the way, here's what we got. So we're now competing against it. I think that there, there's, there's that, that, that has happened. It, it may not, but I feel that once you bring up a great idea, there's gonna be a lot of people that run with this, with this type of project, maybe not your company specifically, but there are already other projects like this, similar to the state, that are, that are doing the work, so I just, I, I hear what, what, you know, some of the court is saying, and I know we haven't heard from Commissioner Nunn's yet, but just wanted to go down the line. I, I want to explore this, right? I wanted to be able to explore this further, to see, uh, what are all the other steps that we need to take? Now, we do need some, you know, some part of you to say, hey, we're committed to this, and, and this is what it may be, and that may be something that the court can work on. work on. Um, if we, if we get into a, uh, like a proposal, and just let anybody come up with any concept, i- it, it, it's gonna be hard comparing apples to oranges, because there's gonna be different ways of looking at, do you, what's the value in starting from ground zero, with no building, right, raise the entire structure, to how can you repurpose what is there? And I think this is really our last chance to say, what can we use with what is there? Because other than this, I think that's it, in my opinion. I do. I, I, like I said, I, I mean, I love this, and I hope this project does happen, but if it doesn't, then I think then we need to go and explore just putting out, uh, a bid for the world to come up with, with a concept. And, and I agree, like, the old courthouse came up with some great ideas, but in the end, there was no one to really back up, um, those finances. And so that's gonna be a big part of this. Uh, but, you know, to continue the, the discussion for now, I don't see what's the, the harm in that, because it's already been here. It's already, it, it's been there for a while. I don't think, what, if, if you, how, how long do we think it would take to have further discussions to really kind of maybe prove up some of our concerns, and, and for the Yobi Group to be able to kind of prove up or show that they are serious, and that they have the backing needed to make this a success? Edward, what do you, what do you think?
We, in, in our discussions, uh, we were looking at forty-five to sixty days is what we're looking at. I mean, we need to, he needs to bring his architects in there. He needs to come up with a solid number of what it's actually going to cost. He's willing to invest seven million, but in our conversations, it may be less, because there may not be as much work. He wants to leave the stadium as much a stadium as possible, so there will be seating. And there may be games actually still played on the ball field. I mean, he was talking about maybe bringing in some trainers for T-ball kids, or, or stuff like that. Those were, those were some of the ideas. But he expressed to me, Commissioner, that in order for me to start, for me to start, I need to have something firm, or something to go by, so that I can tell my people that whoever's invested in me, that, you know, we do have a location, or we do have a possible location, and it may not work, but I need to spend, he's gonna spend some money, you know, to, to do all that.
And how much will we, we spend if we move forward on this?
Time, time, just time.
I'm willing to support time.
Time is, is, is still a commodity that's valuable, but tha- that's the best, to me, the, if we're putting in anything, and it, and it's our time, I'm okay with, with supporting the committee to negotiate this further, to see, is this viable for both sides? So, thank you.
Edward, if we can, you're talking about maybe sixty days, if y'all can, you know, tell us something. And I agree with Commissioner Mottis. I mean, if it's not gonna cost us nothing but time, uh, I also agree, but if you could give us some kind of a, maybe letter of intent from some financial system, like a bank, and said that, yeah, you do, you, you qualify for those, uh.
Right.
For those monies.
Right.
And we know it's a, you know, financial system. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Well, nobody has a problem if we know the money's there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we can get a letter of intent, that somebody's gonna give them the money, or the money's there, it shouldn't be a problem.
So, Commissioner Gonzalez, I make a motion that we, um, that we appoint a, a committee to negotiate a proposed license agreement with Yobi Park, uh, related potential modifications in the licensing of the ballpark at Richard and Borchardt Fairgrounds.
Pending funding being, pending funding being verified?
Verified.
That's my motion, but if you want to, if I get a second.
I, I can't, I'm not supporting anything if there's not funding verified. I, I, there's no, I'm just.
I would, I would say, Commissioner, that we need to have funding verified.
Got to have seven, he's saying he's got seven million bucks.
Funding with, funding, with funding verified. But I, I mean, okay.
Is that possible, sir?
If that's what you all need, I mean, I'm gonna work with what you say to do.
Then there, then that's my motion.
That we got.
Okay.
I'll second that.
The motion moved, there's, um, second.
Okay, well, wait, but what is the, what does a committee mean, John? I mean, I, the committee should be, to me, I don't want to, if Edward wants to go spend some time on this, because he's doing it, and you want to give it another thirty or forty-five days, I, I mean, again, I, I think that property needs to be torn down and repurposed, but if you want to spend, if you want to spend thirty days of staff time doing it, and we can have verified funding, okay, I don't, I don't see how this works.
That would be good for discussion.
I mean, if you want to give it a shot, it's in your precinct, and there, there's certainly nothing going on with that ballpark, and it's withering away, but I don't want to, I don't want a committee of people. I don't want, I mean, I don't want to spend a bunch of time. I just don't.
Who would set up the committee?
I mean, can it just be Edward?
Well, it, it has been Edward, and, and I've been there. We've met in my office.
You and Edward want to meet.
Met on site. I, I don't mind doing that. If we wanted to include a few other individuals, I mean, I think economic development, as, uh, Mr. Mc, uh, Clint, McLaughlin mentioned, uh, is important. Uh, he, he met actually with CCRADC, but he, also with RADC, Robson Area Development Corporation. Uh, they've been part of this, uh, discussions before.
With the RADC.
There, there's a lot of groups that could be brought in, uh, but I, I would say it would need to be manageable, small groups, to be efficient, uh, and do the, do the groundwork, do the footwork for this court, to find out everything we need, all the answers, and then thirty to forty-five days later, we come back and we say either yes, or we say no. And if not, then we can go forward, and, and I agree in supporting a, a motion that would, uh, would open up, uh.
I think the RADC needs to get involved.
Can we just do it with, with you, and, since you and Edward have been doing it, so that we don't.
The committee?
That, that be the, if you, if we have, that be, you and Edward be the ones who work on this, and I don't know how, how do we verify the, the funding, uh, how do we, someone have a suggestion on that?
That's why we were, we're looking, maybe somebody from the judge's office, if Dee's willing, I don't know if she's willing to.
Wait, no, I'm saying.
Oh.
No, I, I want to limit this, and I mean, if everybody else wants to outvote me, great, but I, I, I don't, I don't think that's, I mean, if the judge wants to volunteer her staff, that's up to the judge, but that, I'm not gonna do that to the judge while she's not here and can't even speak for herself. So at this point, I, I mean, I'm totally comfortable with Commissioner Mottis taking the lead on this, because it's his precinct, and he ought to have the opportunity to do that, and that's the only reason, at this point, being honest, that I'm supporting this, is because it's your precinct, and you ought to have that opportunity. I just want the, I would just like the funds verified, and it just being you and Edward for now. And if you need to pull in the county attorney, or, John, I mean, you're a commissioner, you can do whatever you want. We don't have to, I mean, you can go get the county attorney to give, give you advice anytime you want. So can we just designate you and Edward, and, no, I'm just saying, you, we don't, we don't dictate what you do. I mean, this is your, the project, you want to work on it, work on it. I mean, it's, I think it's, I get why you're trying to do it. I, I, I just.
But I would say.
I'm skeptical, but I, I mean, I want to give you a chance to work on it.
But I would get, I would do, I would get the, our, the Robson Economic Development involved.
Yeah, if you want to pull it in, pull it in.
It could be another committee member there, so.
Edward, it's Robstown. Uh, don't you know any retired baseball players, like, uh, Mr. Garcia, who I think played for the Royals? I don't know if he's there, or, I've heard he's in town somewhere.
In town sometimes.
No, we, we can, we can, there's also some of the ISD personnel.
And, yeah, coaches, yeah, maybe can help you along with this.
Yep.
Yeah, just a suggestion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
How are we verifying the funds? That's what we need to find.
I can work with the county attorney to get that, Commissioner, because that's my concern, too. Uh, I mean, the concept is great, and we want that. Economic development is something that we seek in the court, everybody, but we need to make sure that we, it's, it's something that works for the county as well, you know? And also, that has to be the analysis. It's something, this project is something that's gonna work for the community. Five years ago, we know that we have some kind of project, the Top Gulf, they, they were seeking to get something here, but didn't have the market for that. So those kind of questions, and I asked for the county attorney, so I can totally work with the county attorney, just to look into those detail, and come before the court, and just to provide what it's, this is something, before they have the money, that's the main, the main concern, and then it's just to do the analysis, to see if this is something that is going to work for our community.
Right. I just need an, I just need language in the motion that's clear on how the funds will be verified. That's all I'm looking for. Auditor, anybody have a suggestion on how to word that? Anybody, anybody?
I think the commissioner already included that one.
No, no, I'm just saying, but how does it verify?
But how is it?
How do we, how do we ver, do we need to, see, a bank account with seven million dollars in it? I just need to, I just need someone to, we just need to, so that no one walks away unclear on what, you know, the, the nice gentleman wants to know what we want, and I'm just trying to be specific. So how do we want to?
Shouldn't we, shouldn't we get something from the financial institute that's gonna lend him the money, or give him the money, have a letter from there?
The county attorney.
Stating.
Auditor have a suggestion? I don't, I, I'm.
We've talked about a letter of credit. We've talked about putting money in escrow.
Both of which have been discussed, but placing funds in escrow to be held, um, while they're pursuing, while they're moving forward, um, then it's also been discussed.
I think we just have some.
A letter of credit.
Yeah, I think that comes, I, I, a letter of credit that verifies that they have seven million dollars worth of funding available. I, I, just something that, that I don't want, I don't want their money in escrow. We're not nowhere near that. I'm just saying, a letter of credit from a financial institution, or a bank statement that shows they got seven million dollars, or something. So I would just leave it to the county audit, attorney and auditor to come up with a way that verifies funding. How about that? Whether it's a letter of credit, a, a bank statement, just something, that would be, I, I just want something that verifies their funding.
And this is so early in the process, Commissioner, that, um, either one of those things, if that satisfies the court, um, you have plenty of time down the road to change that to money in escrow, or anything else you want to do.
Well, that would be if we, if it comes to pass, that, you know, they, they do their diligence, and, yeah, we'd have to have the money in escrow, right, at some point, but not at this point. I just want verification of funds. So if that's.
Part of the motion.
Clear enough, I guess, uh?
Acceptable?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, he accepted the verification.
That part is acceptable.
Yes.
Letter of credit, bank statement.
Letter of credit, bank statement, yes.
Okay.
Okay, all.
Is that clear enough, Kara? Is that good?
Only further, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
May I have a question? May I have a question? My question is in reference to, we've looked at this thing outside. We haven't looked at it inside. So suppose if we look down here thirty days from now and say, oh, no, this is not what we really want, because it's too far gone to do what we want to do, how do we, we have a way out, right?
Oh, there's no way, yeah, it's, this is.
Just whatever, right. I just didn't want us tied to something that we can, because we looked at it.
This is not a commitment time, that is just.
Okay, all right, got you.
Non-binding.
We appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion passed. Okay, then we go back to. Uh, human resources, HR, discuss and review operation of animal service department, discuss and consider job description and salary in related matters. Mr. Sully.
Good afternoon, or good morning, still. Uh, we have looked at several options for the, um, management of the Animal Services Center. Uh, I believe you all met last week to discuss, uh, options. We're asking the court to approve four requests in consideration of the discussion that was held at the last Commissioner's Court special hearing. Uh, one of those requests is for the proposed job description for Animal Services Coordinator, which you all should have before you. And then the second request is for the classification of the position. Uh, we discussed, uh, special services in terms of a, uh, contract agreement, and we decided that the best option for the county at this time was to propose a temporary worker classification. Uh, so with the Animal Services Coordinator job description, the request and approval for the classification to be a temporary worker, uh, and thirdly, we need approval for the pay schedule for that Animal Services Coordinator.
Okay, first one you put in, that is the Animal Service Manager, that's the one we gotta post? That's the one we need to post outright for the?
Yes, the Animal Services Coordinator, yes, sir. And then also some discussion on whether or not you want to post the Animal Services Manager position as well in interim. Uh, this is a temporary worker request that we utilize in the interim, until we identify a party for the Animal Services Manager position.
Okay, I'm confused. The, the Animal Service Manager is a permanent position?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's the one we need to post?
Yes, sir.
To fill that.
We'll also need approval for this job description for Animal Services Coordinator.
Coordinator, right.
And once you approve that, we can, we can post that as well.
Okay. But we need, we need the coordinator now.
Yes, sir.
To be able to move forward, and to have somebody to run it, while we're still looking for a full-time position.
That is correct.
As a manager.
Currently, the job description before you does not have a, uh, pay schedule assigned to it, so we wanted the court to, uh, decide on what that pay schedule should be. I know the recommendation put before us was fifteen hundred dollars every two weeks, um, for eighty hours of service. However, does it, that, that amount?
Fifteen hundred or fifteen thousand?
What?
Fifteen hundred dollars every two weeks.
Every two weeks?
Every two weeks.
That's three thousand.
Three thousand per month.
Three thousand, yeah.
Three thousand per month.
However, that, that number does not align with our, uh, our current pay schedule.
For the coordinator?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is the coordinator position what we had instructed to go do, that we gave Commissioner Mottis and Gonzalez the authority to go?
Right.
Is that, so this is just kind of going back and doing the paperwork for it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the coordinator position is the, is the acting director, and so let me do that one first, because I got other questions on the, okay, so.
So it would not be an acting director. Uh, we decided to make it just a coordinating, uh, position in the interim.
He'd still be a supervisor.
Yes.
He'll be direct.
Acting coordinator.
The monitor of the Animal Services Center was, agreed to be I D in the interim, and that person would report to I D until we identify animal, uh, a, a permanent position for Animal Services Manager.
Okay, and, and I guess, these are just job descriptions and, and so forth, but is it germane to talk about all the other stuff, or is that, should I wait for item three on the facility, Jenny? I'm just trying to make sure, because we got two items on here that, you know, I want to take the opportunity on whichever one is correct, or both. It says related matters. We can talk about all the other stuff that's been going on, since it's related matters, right? Because I have a bunch of questions on that, too.
Well, this is an attempt to, I believe, this position, and you bringing this position is addressing the other things that I perceive you are wanting to discuss, so I think it's.
It's okay to go into, okay, so, so I guess that's, um, if we want to stay on this, and then I don't want to get off of this, because I want to go into, I want to talk about all the stuff that I day, and Johnson, all this, and others have been, whoever have been working on in regards to this, um, too. So how do we want to do that? Do I want to tackle this? Because if you, if you've, I mean, I've read this, I've looked at it, but I'm really relying on the HR director to come up with job descriptions now. So if you believe that this meets the needs, which it seemed to to me, but if you believe it meets the needs of what we wanted as a court, until we got the permanent, then I'm okay with, with that. The pay on this one is what again? Because I thought we were paying the, this person, the same thing that we were gonna pay Juan, or we were paying Juan during the interim, and that doesn't sound like that's what this is.
No, sir. So this is a lower level position, uh, which will be between pay group nineteen and twenty, and Juan was a pay group twenty-six. So we want this interim person to supervise the current operations, uh, with the assistance of I D, until we identify a permanent, uh, position.
But, but how are we gonna get?
And this will be, what it is, Commissioner, is a contract basis.
No, I get it, but how are we gonna get somebody for this amount of money that's gonna be, have any experience in this business?
We've already identified.
They already apply for it.
That's good.
She has, uh, certification as an Animal Services Control Officer.
And so is it forty hours a week?
Yes, sir.
No, 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 no. Tim, um, I believe, and, and Dorsey, when we talk about it, it's about a temp position, which is twenty-nine hours per week. That's different. That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so you're saying, okay, for twenty-nine hours a week, it's three thousand a month, is basically what you're saying?
Pay group, um, eighteenth, um, do you have that?
Yes, pay group eighteen would be, uh, nineteen or twenty would be eighteen fifty-nine an hour, which amounts to about thirteen thirty-eight, uh, every two weeks. But in consideration of the temporary worker, which can only work a max of twenty-nine hours, we would need an exception from the court to approve forty hours for that position, as well as the exception from the court to, uh, classify this temporary employee to be paid more than the ninety percent max that is currently in our policy for temporary services workers.
Is, is that including benefits? Do they get benefits?
No benefits for this position.
I'm a little lost. So is it twenty-nine hours a week, or is it forty hours a week?
Currently, currently, our policy is twenty-nine hours.
Is this proposal twenty-nine hours a week?
Should be twenty-nine hours. It should be a temp, temp position for twenty-nine hours, which is, you know, twenty-nine hours, you don't have to pay benefits, right? In the meantime, we use this position just to help right now with the facility, while I'm working there, I'm being in that facility, and just to continue what the court decides to do with this facility. If we want to hire the, the manager, or we want to seek a different way to just help with this facility through contract, I mean, is what the court decides to do.
This is for twenty-nine hours a?
That should be just for temp, for twenty-nine hours per week.
At what, at this rate, that has been agreed to by?
Eighteen dollars fifty-nine, that's what he said.
Okay, that's been agreed to by this person, and y'all are comfortable with this person, which we charge y'all with doing, and if, if this is, if this is what we're wanting to do, then I'm fine with that. I mean, if, but I want to make sure it's clear, it's twenty-nine hours at that pay rate that you just articulated.
Eighteen fifty-nine.
And that's what we're doing.
That's a pay group nineteen. Eighteen fifty-nine is a pay group nineteen.
Pay group nineteen with the dollar is eighteen fifty-nine per hour, per hour. Yes, a temp, twenty-nine. So just want to clarify, um, get some clarification. We're just seeking here, Tim, um, to get just this temp position, right? We're not doing nothing with the, with the manager.
Well, that's on here, too.
Yeah, I have, but that's what I'm.
Right, but on this particular one, we're just, that's why I said, can we just do that one first? Because this one's a little easier for me than the next one.
Yes.
So this is just for the Animal Services Coordinator, then I, I would make the motion to approve the Animal Services Coordinator, as has been articulated, at twenty-nine hours a week, at.
Pay group nineteen.
Pay group nineteen, until we hire a permanent, or whatever we decide to do, director for. Pay group nineteen until we hire a permanent, or whatever we decide to do, director for the, um?
Animal care.
Animal care services center. That would be the motion there.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead. Second, but I'm sure.
Yeah, second.
Also need to make sure that we get an approval for the exception with the temporary services worker, the max cap is ninety percent of the current rate per our policy, which would be sixteen seventy-three an hour. So we would need the court to approve.
I don't understand that part, no.
According to our policy, uh, there's a waiver and requirement that temporary workers will be compensated only at ninety percent of the base pay rate and grade and step as authorized by the commission of court for each.
Or we could just go a different step.
Well, it's not just a matter of the step, it's, it's a matter of the ninety percent cap as well, which would be sixteen seventy-three instead of eighteen fifty-nine.
Right, or you just go to the next step, and, and then you have the ninety percent cap, and then you're not making the exception to your policy. Then you go to step twenty.
Yeah, you, you make a phase to that position in the hour length, that's correct, what you're saying, Commissioner.
Or if you go to the next step, and you don't do, either way is fine with me, but I'm gonna, that's the motion on this in a second. And then if we wanna make the exception, we can do that as a separate motion, but that's on this one.
Okay, do I hear, uh, there's a motion on the floor, second, to, um, accept the, um, animal control coordinator's position at a pay, uh, group of nineteen, right? And, um, uh, twenty-nine hours a week. And then a temp, it would consider to be a temp.
Right.
So, um, Commissioner, none of this is?
It's okay, just do it. Just vote it.
Any, uh, do you, any favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
I've got other things on this, but I really have to go to the bathroom. Could we take a five-minute recess, 'cause I don't kill your quorum?
Yeah, my child.
Okay, what, can we do that?
We're gonna take a, a ten-minute break, ten-minute recess.
Thank you.
Ladies, we're gonna take, team. And we're at, uh, member B, human resources, but we're still with, with you, uh, Sully. And I think that, um, brought to my attention, I guess, on the, when you mentioned ninety percent, I don't know, we need to do ninety percent because it's a, it's a temp position?
Yes, sir. What, what has been brought to my attention by I. Day, and, and she's correcting this, is that because it's a new position, we also need your approval on that, and because it is also a new position, we can determine the rate.
It's a, it's a temp position. It's not like the court has approved a new adding, a diff, a position. This is under that different category what the budget is, so it's as a temp. Just to clarify that, it's a, it's a separate.
Yes.
Okay.
And I wanna apologize to the court for the confusion. We had discussed forty hours a week, but that was, uh, what we're gonna do under contract services. Because it's this temporary, a temporary position, we can only do twenty-nine hours.
Hey, Dave, I have a question. Since it's a temp position, do they still fall under the, the six-month probation thing?
Yes, sir.
Well, well, uh, I'm sorry, let me correct that, the answer is no.
No?
Because, uh, the temporary position, they have a max of ninety days. And I did verify that, that they can be in position. Temporary positions can only exist for ninety days.
It's only good for ninety days?
Yes, the temporary position's good for ninety days, and they're supposed to bring it back to court for reapproval every ninety days.
Any ninety days that, that we need to bring this position.
Okay.
And they can, that you have a max number of three times?
Correct, nine, uh, three times ninety-day sets, uh, but we'll have to come back before the court each time for approval for extension.
Very good. Thank you.
Three nineties.
Okay, and, and can I go, is it okay before, before, can I go into some of these other things on the allegations and stuff like that? Is that okay? Can I address some of those?
There or the, or down in the bottom?
Yeah, Jenny said it was okay here, because the other one's on the facility, so.
All other matters, yeah.
Okay, so number one, the inaccurate statement that was made earlier by the person in public comment was that the board was told not to meet, that is one hundred percent inaccurate. In fact, I am very bothered that this advisory board has not met. They are holdovers, they have all abilities, and the fact that they have not met is very concerning to me. So I don't know who told. I've checked with the county manager, I've checked with the county attorney, I've checked with other people, and no one has advised the animal services advisory board not to meet. So if they are not meeting, then they are not doing what they should be doing, and they need to start meeting immediately, because they are holdovers by law, they are still on the board, and they should still be meeting, so that should be happening. And if it's not, then the board is not doing its duty, and I would hope that they would start meeting immediately. The new coordinator, my understanding, will be in charge, and will work with all volunteers on an equal basis moving forward, and I think that is, and that person will be in charge. The board, we, I appreciate the service of the board, but they are not in charge of the animal services control, they are an advisory board. The coordinator will be in charge, and will, will work with the volunteers, and will determine how they'll be worked with, is my understanding. If that's not true, then someone needs to correct me. Um, it, it's been alleged by the speaker earlier in a very inappropriate email to me that I've responded to, that, that we don't investigate all allegations, that we have some specific bias towards Ms. Miller and her allegations. Quite the contrary, I don't even read respectfully Ms. Miller's emails anymore, or Ms. Bockhold's emails anymore. So I'm gonna say it very publicly and very transparently, so that you're very well aware of it, ma'am, and everybody else is, too. I forward them on to the county manager, um, and I, I let her look at them, because that's what I've been doing for quite some time. I've had no contact with Ms. Miller, other than passing those emails on to county manager, and I've had no contact with Ms. Bockhold, other than the same way. Personally, I am sick and tired of the drama that circulates around that animal, uh, services advisory, uh, uh, center. It has been a, a, a distraction. It has been, it is, it has hurt nothing more than the animals that are involved, and I am, we are working hard. We have, we have investigated every allegation, we've spent more time on this thing. County manager has spent time, she's gone out there and tried to, to facilitate this on the court's behalf, because we, as a court, have great value and wanna make sure those animals are taken care of. And every single allegation has been, uh, has been investigated. Some have been, and Mr. Sully has been out there several times, and they have, some have proven to be frivolous allegations, some have proven to be exact allegations, and some have been in between. So ma'am, if you have allegations, then you can let the HR director know, or you can let the county manager know, and she will investigate them, just like we've investigated every other allegation. But I, I am, I, I am tired of all the, the crap that is centered around this, this animal services thing. And about eighty percent of it is, is, has been rubbish. It has been a waste of the county's time, and it has been a waste of this court's time, it's been a waste of everybody's time that's been in it. We are there to serve the animals. I, I am not there to serve you, ma'am, like you said I should be, or the, or the, or the, or Ms. Miller, or Ms. Bockhold. I am there to do what's best for the county and the animals that we are to do. They are not my constituents, but that's the charge that I believe we have, and I believe we have more than upheld our charge, because we have spent more time on this department than any other department in Nuasis County, bar none, maybe any other times, too. Now, we had to do that with the metal examiner's office, and so that'd be the exception for a while, but that's been way settled down for a long time, and this continues to go on. So let me repeat, the board should have been meeting, it needs to be meeting, you are a board currently, we will put those rea, there was, um, I told my assistant to get with the county manager, we will put those back on to, to get those reappointed or not reappointed, but that board should have, could have, and, and the fact that it's not been meeting all this time is very disturbing to me. The new coordinator will be in charge, not the board, not the commissioners' court, not the, you know, any, the county manager's there for a while until we figure this out, but this has got to stop, and, and Ms. Miller can bring all the allegations she wants, you can bring all the allegations you want, Ms. Bockhold, anybody in this county can bring an allegation, and if they are legitimate, we're gonna find out, and we're gonna get to the bottom of it, and we're gonna investigate all of them equally. Did the drug one set me off a little bit more than the rest of them? You bet, because that one bothered me more than any of the other ones that I've seen, that if we're mishandling drugs, that's been investigated, that's been rectified, that was immediately jumped on, uh, just like if any other serious allegations like that were made. But every allegation's been addressed, every one of them. Now, if you wanna, I'd like now, as I ranted for my five minutes, I would like you to take the opportunity to, both of y'all, to tell this court and the public all that you've been doing just since our last meeting in regards to getting this done, so that you have the opportunity, because you've been accused of things that I know are not true, you've been, and, and so I'd like for you to be able to say whatever you wanna say in a public setting, so that it's on the record, and that it's out there, and that anybody wants to speculate, they can speculate all they want, but all the speculation, about eighty percent of it's garbage, so go ahead.
Yes, sir, so I wanna say publicly that the county judge and entire commissioners' court, as, as you have correctly stated, been very involved in this, uh, the concerns reported by the animal services center, and we have, I have thoroughly investigated each and every concern that existed. I've been there multiple times. I've worked with, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez, Christian Maraz, to make sure that the concerns are addressed. Uh, Friday, I. Day, my, and myself were there. Uh, we have, uh, transferred the animal services, uh, manager to another department, and we
At his request.
At his request, yes, sir, that is absolutely correct. And we are, we have current plans underway to ensure the ongoing, uh, uh, proper care and services to the animal services shelter, uh, to ensure that the concerns continue to be monitored and correctly addressed.
Go ahead.
Yes, Commissioner, you stated there's a lot of misinformation going around, um, but it matters to me and to the court is, like, get the job done. We taking care of the department, we, we, we working really hard, um, with HR, with the court, everybody, um, so what, and taking care of the operations of the center and also the animals. So we are working, really. I, I just, every single time something happens, I give it the information to the court, right? And yesterday, I spent my day in the facility, the Friday as well, and I'm providing all the assistance that I have to the, to the staff and to the community. I understand the concerns from the community, I think because it's miscommunication or misleading something, but just to send a message, we're working, and we're working, and we have, we working together to make this progress. We don't get anything, like, putting stuff up there to put people against each other. That's never going to work. Working together is when we make the progress, and that's why I'm working with the staff, and then hope, and then, since we're gonna have the board meetings again, just working with the advisory board, which is essential for this community as well, uh, for the department. So we are gonna be working together, and I'm open to work with all of them. That is my policy, working with everybody, working together, and that's the courts, and then, uh, uh, the policy as well, the working and making progress. So it's a lot of miscommunication, we were working, that's the message that I want to send to the community.
Hey, Dave.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna thank you for inviting me last week to go visit.
Yes, Commissioner.
That compound. And I was pleased the way things are going, and the way you've handled things, you and Mr. Sully. So for that, I thank you very much, and let me know what's going on. Keep listening.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanna say a couple of things, uh, Commissioner Mazzan, thank you for being part of the committee, you know, your time that you spent meeting with us also and doing the interview. But I also wanna thank, uh, mostly, uh, Sally and, and I. Day, and, and for actually being hands-on this whole thing for the last almost three weeks, I guess, or a month, seems like a month, but, but, um, you know, a lot of the extra time we, we spent on the phone, talking back and forth and trying to decide what to do, and, um, I think finally came with a good solution here, you know, that the, the animal control, uh, coordinator will be the one that, uh, running the, the show for now, and, you know, if anybody needs anything, they need to go to that coordinator, not to anybody else. If they're not happy with that, then they can come to the administrator. But I just wanna say thank you, and also, uh, Jenny, thank you for your guidance also in providing us in, in your legal capacity, so thank you for, there's a lot of time spent for a lot of people and a lot of extra time, but, um, you know, as far as, uh, the volunteers, I, I wanna just say that I got called that, that, uh, we're killing dogs, and we're killing this, and we're killing animals, and that we didn't care, and, you know, and my response to, to, I don't know, I don't read the emails no more either, but my response was just the fact that saying, you know, that, uh, I know you, she said, I care about the animals, and I said, well, I care about the animals and her staff. And I said, and, so I wish you would care about her staff, too, but, so right now, we're trying to get the department to back into operation, back where it belongs, you know, get all the stress out that, that's there, and, and continue moving forward. And, uh, and I just wanna say that while we're doing it, we're still taking pictures of the dogs, 'cause I got copies of pictures of those dogs, you know, and, and so we're moving forward. It's not like everything was a standstill, no, I don't think any dog died, you know, or cat, so I wanna thank y'all for the work that y'all did, appreciate it, you know, we're just moving forward, and you, you know, you got our support, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, anything else, we'll go ahead and move forward to the grants department, uh, grants, uh, see, and discuss and consider submission of a grant application to the Office of Justice Programs, OJP, Bureau of Justice Assistance, BG, BJA, for the twenty-twenty-four bulletproof vests partnership program. And I don't know who put that on the agenda, so.
We did, sir.
Grants, I guess grants did it, right?
Yes. Good morning. Uh, the agenda is to go out for, submit an application for bulletproof vests for some of the law enforcement, uh, departments. We reached out to them, and, um, stated here is the ones that responded and what their need is. This grant does need a fifty percent match, and we requested that information from each department that, um, responded, and they have either decided to do it from their forfeiture fund or from their general budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion to approve, uh, in second, any favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Okay. Move forward, thank you. Public Works, uh, letter D from Public Works, uh, discuss and consider approving a recommended funding source and cost estimated of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty for Constable Precinct Five, because of the building renovation project. Discuss and consider authorizing Public Works to obtain corporation bids for the manager of, for the method of, of procurement.
So move.
So motion, do I hear, second?
Second.
Second, in discussion? No discussion, if all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passed. Public Works, item number two, discuss and consider approval of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding source for Public Works equipment in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, sixty-seven dollars, no sense. You know, just to make it clear so you all understand, it's really not that, the court has already approved six hundred thousand of them, so really what they're, what they're asking for is an additional one hundred and sixty-two thousand and sixty-seven dollars. The, the six hundred thousand was already approved, I think, I don't know what commissioners' court that was, but, right, Lou?
Yes, it was, uh, approved back in, um, April twenty-sixth.
April twenty-sixth. So right now, we're just saying we need one hundred and sixty-two thousand and sixty-seven dollars. And where is that coming from?
So we are requesting, um, an allocation from either, uh, the commissioners' court, the court, or from countywide funds, which is, uh, Jeff is distributing right now, all the balances right now.
But for number two?
But.
I thought we'd already allocated money?
Six hundred.
Six hundred thousand.
We're requesting an additional one hundred and sixty-two to cover the remainder.
Okay.
They're short one hundred and sixty-two thousand.
That's not good. Thank you.
So if anyone would like to donate one hundred and sixty-two thousand.
And how about the, we have no money left in ARPA funds?
We do, we do. Uh, we have a remainder of three million, one hundred.
There's usually, there's usually.
From there. All right, okay.
Get rid of it. So.
Will do.
I, I, my motion that we use the ARPA funds.
I second that motion.
This is motion on the floor, and second, in all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Just keep track, cause I know we're gonna, we're still keeping track of all that, you know, okay?
Okay, forget it for the.
We are, thank you.
Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, number three, Public Works. Discuss and consider pausing work on animal care facility project and any related matters considered paused due to budget and getting animal services back in order. So this, I guess, is something we need to put on hold till we go back and look at again, I guess. And try to make, try to come back and say, do we actually need what we're looking at? Do we need to spend the 4 million and can we do something else? Basically, we're having trouble with a small facility now. We know we're gonna do a facility four times larger and, you know, how we're gonna come up with. I don't know, Commissioner Milo, this is kind of like falling in your court. I think it's something we need to discuss and probably, you know, maybe have something, maybe a special meeting with this and discuss which way we wanna go.
I, I'm okay with pausing. I mean, there hasn't been too much work being done on this at this moment. Until we kind of reestablish where we're at, do we turn this temporary position into a permanent director or go out and search for a new director or possibly consolidate? I know there's a lot of options to do in Animal Services. The case remains, though, that we do need a new facility. If you've been there to my office right in the back, it's Public Works and Animal Care. And if you've been to the, to the kennels, you'll see that it's an older facility and it deserves something that's more centralized. And that is something new that helps keep better health for the animals, for the workers that are there. Better facility, like I said. The location that we have selected, which is next to the old show barn, which is at Business 77 and Highway 44, which is basically at the, at the curve there in Robstown, as you're coming into town from Cal Allen. It's, it's a good location because if I gave you directions, I'll tell you, my first day on the job, when I went to Rob's, to the Robstown office, was it was hard to find because the, the address is just not a known or an easy road to find. It's on a farm road, which back in the day was probably useful, but now it's not. But moving the facility to where we had selected last year, that was years in the making. That took at least two or three years of planning to make it happen. The 4.2 was down from the original five or six million, I think that was initially proposed. Most of this was funding that we scaled back based on what the court had said, which was do more with less. And I think that we did. I, I do see the value in holding off until we get a better idea of how we're going to manage our facility. But that doesn't change my opinion on, on keeping the facility. How long do we hold off on? Do we cannibalize this project for the sake of the budget? I, I don't think that's fair. So if we go that route, you're gonna have a fight on your hands. But if you'd say we need to, to pause for, to find out who our management will be, then I'm all for that. But, but to, to take from this project to use for anything else, I, I'm concerned. And I know that that's maybe not necessarily where we're going with today. But I just kinda wanna put that on record, that that would be not, that's not the reason for us to do that. It's merely because we've had a change in staff. We have an interim, a part-time director or manager there at the facility now. And that's the only reason why we really can't, maybe shouldn't move forward. But I would like to see this to start back up at some point, maybe at the beginning of the new fiscal year so that we can move forward, cause as we know, any construction delayed, the price is gonna go up even further, so.
Well, I, I, I hear you, Commissioner, and I think, you know, really agree with you that we do need a new facility. But, you know, the 4 million versus maybe 1.5 or whatever, you know, to have. Because we don't know and discuss what we're gonna do with, we're gonna house sources, we're gonna do what? I think those are the things that need to come up during our discussions. You know, that what are, what are directions are we gonna take to be able to accomplish this? You know, so, but definitely we need a new bill. I'm not, I'm not arguing with that. I mean, I, I've supported it all the time. But I think this is something that we need to go back and re, revisit and, and see what. You know, cause I mean, you know, we're having trouble now with staff and, you know, you have a bigger bill and you have more staff, you know, and we don't have the staff. So, and I, I like the idea that you said that, you know, we need to hold probably till after the fiscal year and come back and, you know, get on it.
What is it, the 60 or 90 days that we have for this new position that we just created?
That's the 90 days. That's correct, Commissioner.
So that, that works perfectly, I think, with this, the end of the fiscal year. A few months is not gonna make a, a change in my opinion on this. But like I said, anytime that we delay on any type of construction, whether it be this or even Bob Hope here, we wait, you're talking about the price going up on materials. And that's my biggest concern with this. But I, I'm okay with pa, taking a pause until we get some stability and we, as a court, make a decision on a permanent director or what our next step should be.
Can I say something? The court previously had voted to do a CSP for the animal care facility. And my office has been actively working on that project.
CFP?
Yes, and we're close to advertising for it. So please include an instruction to purchasing if we're gonna pause so that I can let my staff know to hold off. Literally, we're about to probably run an ad on Friday.
At this point, you need to pause. So at this point, you probably need to pause.
Right, okay.
So, and then I guess the, the motion would be just to hold for 90 days. And we can come back and revisit, see where we at and what we're gonna do. Hopefully by then, we'll also have a new director.
All work.
All work. All work, and that would encompass.
All work?
All work, yeah.
Meaning?
Meaning all, every, any work being done.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Robinson's asking, he's asking for a specific.
Definitely, yeah, sure. So, do we hear, is there a second on that or is it your motion, Commissioner, or?
Yeah, if, can we pick a, a specific date on that? I mean, I know we're talking 90 days, but what would the next court meeting be after that?
August, September.
For the 90 days.
I'd wanna make sure we take action on it and by then, we should know what, what we're gonna do with our budget and then we can move forward.
I'll second that.
He wants a specific date.
Yeah, so what would be our, I guess, would you recommend the last meeting in September or the first meeting in August? I'm sorry, October.
90 days would be the 21st of September, or 20, 2nd of September. Sorry, so the next meeting would be the 27th of September.
Okay.
You gonna do it till then?
So I, I motion to consider pausing work on animal care facility project until September the 27th, where court will take action to. Do we need to direct staff, Michael, or y'all were already going forward with it? So what would, what do we need to put in our motion to make it?
Well, in that time of consideration, so if I may pause, court could resume all activities.
I can't hear you. Michael, you gotta come up here, man, sorry.
I think when you bring it back on the 27th, just include some language that says in your motion, if you wish for us to resume the activities that were already approved by the court. I wouldn't, I wouldn't need a, a new approval at that point.
But you, but you, this is enough pause for you to know?
Yes, yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, that's my motion.
Second.
Call and verify the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed?
And then.
I think, I just think they're probably in between, Commissioner. We probably need to probably look at, probably call maybe a special meeting or to, to discuss strictly the, the.
Maybe as we get closer to it or something.
Yeah, the facility, the animal control, whatever. You know, just.
Yeah, that might be.
Nothing else but that, you know?
Michael or Iday, do you know, or maybe Lisa, what was the breakdown on the funding? Where were, where were all the sources of funding for the 4.2?
For the 4 million, it says CIOs money, Commissioner.
CIOs, from?
From that 2020?
That's, that's, I believe, so that's for those 2021.
Do we have Teresa?
Cause there was no ARPA in that one.
There's no ARPA, it was just CIOs money.
CIP?
Yes, that's correct.
What was, what was the breakdown, though? Do we know who? I thought I put some in and then.
I, I can look that up. Give me just a moment.
It was just one funding source of CIOs money, yeah.
Didn't have to put any?
No, we don't have any extra.
The Commissioner, I thought the Commissioner in the previous just.
I thought I had put some in, so that's.
That's probably, that's the one that we did for the library. That's, that's, we put extra money for that.
And then before we get off this item, we did not do the, we did not do the job description for the permanent person. And we were gonna go back and discuss that too, and we didn't do that, so.
Oh, yeah, we need to, it'll get posted, yeah.
Yeah, well, or whatever we're gonna do with it. I don't know what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah.
So I just wanted, before we got off animal care, I wanna make sure we didn't forget that.
Okay, we already passed the motion, right?
Yeah.
So I think we need to go back to animal care.
We voted, or didn't we not vote?
We voted, right?
I thought we did.
No, I don't think.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Did vote aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay. I'm gonna go back to HR, Sally, Sally's on the, the Department Animal Control Manager.
Sir. Our request is to post the Animal Services Manager position as well as the, we've already gotten permission for the Animal Services Coordinator position. So we can seek and identify a replacement for that position. I believe the Commissioner's Court has the job description for the Animal Services Manager before them.
And Iday, did you have comments on this? I thought you were wanting to say something on the manager.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not clear if the court wants to go ahead and, and have this position open yet. For the manager position, right?
I don't know. I mean.
That's my, that's my, my question, if I, I, I would recommend just to seek like what are the other options the court can have, you know? I believe that we were talking, I probably talking to the Humane Society, Robstown. We can, you know, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know if we, it's right now, since we are gonna have a coordinator and I'm, and I'm helping as well.
So what she's saying is if we're gonna have a bigger picture discussion regarding what we do with Animal Services, do we wanna post a position for some, a position that might not be there if we decide to consolidate with Robstown or go to the Humane Society or whatever the, or the City of Corpus Christi or whatever the case may be? Do we wanna wait and just use this acting coordinator for a while and not post that position? It's a good, it's a good question.
Would be to our advantage to, to already post a position and possibly have someone identified while we're looking at other options so that we don't have an additional delay if we decide to go that route.
But if you post something that you're not sure you're gonna hire for, that's a little disingenuous for those people who are gonna apply. I mean, that's a little, I mean, I'd hate to put something out and we've done that before and it's not pleasant to always tell, you know, like.
We can bring, I can bring, we can work together to bring options, you know? We're gonna post a position for the town and working with that person, just bring it to the court, next court, next month. These are the options that we have.
Why don't we just go ahead and, and table it for the 12 and come up with some recommendations?
Yeah, I think.
Correct, yeah, that will be the best right now to bring up.
The judge will be back and that'll give us an idea.
That's correct, so everybody.
I want her involvement on that, too. Okay, motion to table until July 12th.
Second.
Motion to table to.
And I'm sorry, to be specific, to table the Animal Services Manager position until July 12th.
The posting.
Thank you.
Right, to table the posting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to purchasing.
Yes, sir.
Purchasing, number one. Discuss and consider approving an order granting an exception to competitive bidding requirements and approving a sole source purchase from Daily and Wells Communications, Inc. in the amount of 56,167.40 for P25 Phase Two system upgrade software for law enforcement radio system. Come, the money's come from Capital Projects. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, that's 1923-8503 MetroCom P25 radio replacement funds. This is to put some remaining radios we have with the most current software so that they can receive the P25 upgrade that was already approved by court. And, and as soon as the court approves, then we can get on the schedule with the City of Corpus Christi to get our radios upgraded for law enforcement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve item number one in the purchasing. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Number, item number two in the purchasing, we discuss and consider approving a buy board contract number 67022 with Gels LLC in the amount of 136,710.36 for the purchase of 18 ballistic shields for Nueces County Law Enforcement use. And this also comes from grants?
Yes, this is a grant number 2420, 2022, the Bullet Resistant Shield Grant Program.
And this, no match, right?
No.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve item number two in the purchasing, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion passed. Three, discuss and consider conditional selection of a bulk diesel and unleaded fuel contract.
So on this one, we received two bids. Where a recommendation is to conditionally select the lowest and best bid submitted by Argendike Oil Company Two Limited for bulk diesel and unleaded fuel contract IFB 3236-23. Public Works recommends approval. That expense will be paid by user department budgeted funds.
So moved.
Second.
Move, second, that we approve number three under purchasing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Number four will be discuss and consider conditional selection for FP 3235-23 grant government services for disaster recovery, ARPA, COVID and FEMA. So, in this discussion, I don't know what's, what's the item this is, but.
Joe, that's the tabulation sheet you just gave.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, for this item, we received six proposals. The selection committee reviewed the proposals and you have the scoring sheet there before you. The selection committee members are the Commissioner's Court Manager, the Grants Administrator, the County Engineer and Emergency Management. The recommendation is to conditionally select Impact Strategic Consulting LLC. They scored the highest in terms of qualifications and experience with CDBG being one of the high points and their price point also was favorable, receiving one of the highest scores on price. This contract is a prepositioned contract. Would only be utilized whenever the court deems it ready to be used. And at that point, a work authorization would be delineated with specific tasks with a not-to-exceed amount and all the requirements for federally funded programs such as FEMA PA in the event of a disaster or something of that nature.
Let me just ask a couple of questions, Mike. On this here, why can't we do a group like we did the engineers and the architects so we can draw from a pool? You know, and not, not so much because of Grant Works is already doing work for the county and according, according to Scott, when he talks about him, he talks pretty highly, pretty highly about him and, you know, that it really helped a lot, already done a good work. So I don't know what the difference here other than the cost. But I, I just think that if we had a pool of the top three, we could draw from whoever we wanted to draw from.
So I believe the bid was written in a way that allows the court to select one or more awardees. The committee was recommending only one. Grant Works is the second highest recommended. So if the court wishes to have multiple, they can select more than one. And then we'll enter into negotiations with them to set up a master service agreement for that. And like I said, if either one gets chosen at, at a later date for a particular work, then we'll bring those.
That probably would be my recommendation to be able to choose from at least three of them, which will be.
What do we need three for, though? I mean, how do, I mean, I could see maybe two, but I don't, three's a lot.
This is just my number. We go to two, we go to two.
Well, I'm trying to figure out why we need even two on this one, but I'm, I'm open to it because those are pretty tight. But.
Yeah.
What, where's impact from?
Yeah.
So, uh, just curious.
Yeah, they're from Houston. If you want, I can have, uh, one of the committee members give y'all some more details on that, that selection. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, well, you know, I like the Commissioner's idea anyway, too, the, the top two would be somebody we can go to, we need them, so. I, I just like, I like the idea of pools, I really like the pool idea, so. Uh, so, we can go ahead and, yeah, I mean, I would recommend both the ninety-nine, ninety-seven, they're pretty right next to each other.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I mean, we can figure that out later. We can just, it's a preposition, it's not costing us anything now. I mean, they're, they were within two points of each other. We know Grant Works does good work, it's nothing wrong with having another one on board. I would, I would say, just to be fair, that, uh, to, to acknowledge within the motion that Impact was the highest rated of the two and just put that in, in there acknowledging that, but I'm fine with two of them. I mean, I think committee did good work, and those are pretty close. But, I mean, cost is a factor, and it's gonna cost less to do that, then we ought to take that into consideration.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would mention that the, uh, the Grant Works in their price point that was published, received the third highest, third highest score, not the tops in price. So, they're a little more expensive than, uh, the Impact one, which is why, which helped Impact's, uh, rating overall.
And that, and that'll be brought out.
It'll be brought out at the time, when you bring the work authorization, you'll see exactly what you're signing up for, how much it's gonna cost, and you can decide at that time, if you're willing to do that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the cost is important.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh.
So, my, uh, I'll restate my recommendation, then. Uh, the, the selection committee recommends conditional selection of Impact Strategic Consulting LLC for RFP thirty-two thirty-five dash twenty-three, Grant Management Services for Disaster Recovery, ARPA, COVID, and FEMA PA. And then, y'all wanna add to that?
Grant Works.
Grant Works.
I, again, seconding the motion, note of, noting that Impact Strategies was the lowest cost, and that needs to be.
Right.
Brought out if and when we ever have to use them.
Sure. Okay, so, here, second?
Second.
The motion, a second, that we, uh, accept, uh, the committee recommendation, Impact Strategies Consulting LLC, but also include the Grant Works, Inc., into the, uh, pool.
And then, Michael, on this, I know it lists at the top ARPA, COVID, and FEMA, this is for any kind of.
It was specifically written for those three. FEMA PA covers a wide range of disasters.
Right, FEMA's like the world, right, and then, um.
We had some lingering items already for, I guess for COVID, not very much. And then, ARPA, depending on if and when they even need that help, but it would be available to them if, if.
Right, and should, is there another category we should have included in that besides FEMA? For that kinda, just.
I don't believe so, that was, um, what was recommended to us as the main ones to take care of.
I mean, FEMA gives you, FEMA's pretty wide, I mean, that's, that's where you deal with most of the disaster stuff.
We're really trying to tackle hurricanes mostly in that, so.
Let me, let me ask a question before we vote, um, and I may have asked it, and I apologize, I was trying to do some research on my own on this. Uh, but, Impact, which was recommended, actually had the second best price point, is that correct?
That's correct.
Based on the scaling. There was two other companies tied for first best.
Right.
Actually got the bronze if you were doing it in that manner, right? You got the bronze, and then Grant Works came in fourth place, didn't even win place or show.
Correct, we had two.
But the others had scoring that was not as high, and so that's how we, we worked it, that it was. So, overall, Impact had the best score.
And the county, the county has worked with Impact in the past already. We also worked with Grant Works.
But, but my question was gonna be, and maybe Anna can help me, or Kathy, or, or you, Michael. How, how do you have that big of a discrepancy in price? I thought industry pretty much set a certain amount, right? I thought there was like an industry standard, like architect, I mean, I guess architects still have different pricing than what they bid for engineers, so is that kind of what happened here?
Yes, each company provided a list of different, um, professions, if you will, that could be tasked on a particular set of work. And depending on how they value those individuals, each company provided a different hourly rate, uh, for those. So, uh, you know, I would assume if you got a more qualified, uh, individual, they're gonna command a higher rate than someone that has less credentials.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, really, what, but, and I guess the other side of that, too, is a good point, John, is that Grant Works would have probably been higher had their price not been.
Correct.
So, they, they ranked higher in other categories than, say, Impact?
We're splitting hairs at this point, though, they were two points apart, right?
We're the same.
Okay, okay, that's fine. That's a good point, though, John, I mean, I didn't realize, because I thought it was third, so you're saying it was too tight for first, and then a second, and then so really, you're right, it would be fourth.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, and second, so, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Same, all opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Pass. Go, uh, number F, auditor, number one.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I respectfully submit Budget Change Order number sixteen for your consideration and approval. All items are of a routine budgetary nature. The backup documentation does include a short narrative from the departments with the proposed, um, with the purpose of the proposal and the requested change order. If Commissioners Court doesn't have any questions, I would request your approval.
Well. Do you have any, Commissioner?
I have, so moved.
Second.
Move, in second, that we accept, uh, approval of the Change Order number sixteen for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion pass. Number two?
Commissioners, I'm also submitting Capital Project Change Order number one twenty-two, one twenty-two for your consideration and approval. The Capital Project Change Order will increase the available budgetary funds for capital revenues that have already been received, recorded, and deposited that collectively total one million, one hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and eleven cents. Please keep in mind that Commissioners Court has previously allocated five hundred and fifty thousand of the earned interest revenues on May twenty-fourth, item three B one, for the ABM Change Order number five for the Energy Savings Performance Contract.
Okay.
All right, so tell me again what we're doing on this one.
Tell us in plain English.
Okay, when, whenever we receive revenues in the capital projects, um, it is budgeted inception to date, which means that anytime that revenues are recorded, we then have to go in and increase the budget in order for you to spend those revenues. That's what I'm doing. We've received revenues, they were deposited into the bank, they've been reflected in our books. I am now increasing our budget, so, in the unallocated funds, budgets, so that you can go back and respend those funds. Now, there are a few that are actually allocated directly to a project. Um, for example, the, um, hilltop roof replacement. Um, I believe that that was a FEMA reimbursement that we finally received. I don't know, I gave up one at a long time ago, but we got the money in. And, um, we received that reimbursement from T D O M for FEMA for the previous hilltop roof and ceiling replacement of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And since those funds were reimbursing the expenses that occurred in that capital project, they're reimbursing that capital project, and then it'll be available to reallocate. But you have to reimburse where the expense happened. The revenue follows the expense, the expense follows the revenue.
When you say reimburse, who reimburses that?
Okay, so, the capital project, nineteen twenty-one, one thousand and four, for the hilltop roof replacement. Um, look, let me look to see who originally funded it, or where the funding originally came from. Nineteen twenty-one.
It was totally with FEMA.
Well, no, we, we received reimbursement from FEMA. I've gotta see where the money originally came from. Okay, so there was a hundred and ninety-two thousand, five fifty-six that came from. Where, oh, that was a, that was a transfer in? Then I've got. It looks like funding came from. Oh, where's it coming from? We put the money in long before. I'd have to go back, it's before twenty nineteen that we put the money in. So, I'd have to go back and research, this, the spreadsheet can only go so big.
How does that, uh, what caught my ear is reallocation?
So, um, I'll find the original funding source of those revenues. Um, whenever I transferred my data over at September twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, from the, and I do have the previous spreadsheets, it's just a matter of going and getting those. But whenever I transferred it over, there was already one point five million allocated to that project. And so, I'm just gonna have to find where the funding source of those, what, where the money came from. If it came from unallocated, and it was one of the initial allocations of that capital project funds, then it would go back to unallocated. If it came from, uh, com, let's say that everybody in Commissioners Court each contributed a portion, it would then be available to go back. You would redistribute the funds in the same manner from which they came.
I don't think they contributed too much.
I, I don't know, I, again, I can get with you after, after Commissioners Court, because I do have that spreadsheet on my computer, it's just, it's gonna take a while to get there. Um, the, um, the only other, the judge also had, um, two tech dot funded projects. Within five years of the project completing, Tech Dot is required to provide an audit of the, um, but, of the agreed-upon contractual items that, the, the joint venture. Um, both of them were at the airport, one of them was the fuel, um, and the other one was the, I think it was the hangar, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, it is in the backup. Um, with that, whenever Tech Dot did their reconciliation, they realized that they had funding left over from that project, and so they redistributed that back to us, five years after it closes, as required by state statute. Um, it was a whole, for both projects, nineteen thousand, four sixty-three, twenty-seven.
So, that goes back to general.
Judges, um, well, it wasn't, it came out of, um, it was originally allocated by Judge Neal, um, in nineteen, in the twenty fifteen COs, in the nineteen nineteen, three thousand, that was airport improvements. So, it would go back to the judge, since the previous judge had allocated those funds.
Judge not here no more, so we can split it, right?
Yes. Oh, I didn't say that you could split it.
She's on the phone, I'm just kidding. She's watching, I'm just doing it for fun.
Um, does anybody have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Do I get anything back?
You received, um, Road District Four funds of two hundred and forty-four thousand, two twenty-five, eighty-eight. That was in nineteen oh one, oh four hundred.
It's Road District Four, you're not in Road District Four, man, I'd be happy to share the love, but. It's Road District Four, man, come on. Hey, just move into Road District Four.
Thank, thank you, Lisa, that's it.
I respectfully request your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Same motion, do, is it approved, same mo, motion, motion pass.
Okay, do we vote?
Do we go to executive session, I guess, we're gonna have to go to executive session, Jenny?
Do we need to do that?
Yeah.
And, and why do we need to do that one in executive session? I was gonna ask my question before we do that, because we've only got one, but why do we have to do that one? Just appointing an additional hearing examiner, right?
It could be, uh, it could be.
We did three, why do we need another one, somebody to decline?
Correct, that's why we're coming to the court to ask that that be compensated. There are two issues. One, there was concern that some type of regulation that affects judges might keep them from being able to sit in this capacity, since this is not a judicial, uh, this is a hearing officer, that's not required to be a judge or even a lawyer, but they were asking for guidance from their governing bodies on that one. Uh, we had one hearing, but we were told that that would not happen again.
Without compensation?
Correct.
Uh, or, okay, so, uh, so it's, what's, what's the suggested compensation? Where do we get it from? I mean, what's the?
The, every application comes with a thousand dollar application fee. So, um, Chief Cook and the sheriff have said that for now, since there's no fee already in there to be assessed on the applicant, and we're gonna bring that back to you as one of several changes to the regulations, um, that that fee could be absorbed by the sheriffs, by that pot of money from the applicants, from the applications. And I've suggested an amount of five hundred per hearing for the, uh, hearing officer.
And then.
But we still don't know the question, the answer from the governing body on the.
So, the hearing is about whether someone got denied and they're appealing that hearing?
Correct.
And so, is there the opportunity to charge the app, the appellant? As oftentimes in, when you appeal things, you have to put appeal bonds up, you have to.
It's just not in the regulations now. I think, uh, we're making a list of that and other things to bring back to the court.
So, do we have any pending need for a, an additional hearing officer now, or can we wait until?
We have, we have, I don't know how many appeals we have, I, there are more now.
Oh, really, we have a bunch?
Yes.
Uh, interesting.
Because, I'm sorry.
It got denied, a bunch that got denied in the appeal?
The, hold on.
We're near the deadline, right? Are we already past it?
We're past, but by agreement, we're okay on the first one. Um, the others.
That might be part of the reason why, you have several on the appeal, or no, that has nothing to do with it?
There's just additional people who have been denied in their process for various reasons.
What kind of denial are happening, Rob, do you know? I mean, inspections, there being.
When they have, uh, an owner who has history that was a source of denial, uh, when you have, uh, I don't know all the various reasons, that's the one that.
What I'm trying to get, but it's not, uh, building codes or anything like that.
There are, there are other people who have not gotten, I don't know if this is, this is one I've heard about, there's not timely inspections done, I don't know if that's been worked out. Uh, but there are several issues with being in a location that, uh, is too close to some type of protected school, church, home, um, and various issues, it's a lengthy set of requirements.
I mean, because there is a requirement, you gotta be so many feet away from public schools or churches.
Yes.
You know, same as a liquor license or something.
Right.
I mean, it's there, if, if they don't meet that, then why are they appealing?
They have a right to appeal under the regulations.
We should have something like what Brent's saying, have them put up some kind of fee, you know?
I'm absolutely one hundred percent in favor of that, it just is not in the regulations right now. So, that's why we're gonna bring back the regulations with that addition and others that we have found through the process that we need to tweak.
We're gonna amend, no, we're gonna amend it.
But we could, we could literally make that amendment right now, and, and you just go put the language in so that we don't get delayed on that, because it's all related matters in regards to this item.
You could, but I don't think it, it would affect anybody who appeals after today.
Right, because we got two weeks for our next meeting, or a month before you bring it, so we could, I get it, ones that have already appealed have appealed, but.
Okay.
We could, I mean, I would, I would make a motion that we adds, had an appropriate appellate, um, fee, bond, whatever the county attorney thinks is appropriate.
Okay.
To the ordinances and regulations, and that be effective today, pending the language provided by the county attorney.
We have, we have, uh, proposed two fifty to be assessed both to the county and to the applicant who is appealing, so that both parties are paying a portion of that fee.
That sounds reasonable. I would add that to my. That sounds reasonable, I would add that to my motion.
Is the party gonna pay something?
Is, is that with the thousand dollars that they, with their application fee, that's an addition to?
Additional.
Yep.
Uh, uh, at the time of appeal, if an, an appeal happens.
Yep, additional cost.
So if it's denied, is that, I'm just trying to. If their application is denied?
They lose their thousand dollars.
They lose their thousand dollars, if they want to appeal, they have to file the extra two fifty fee.
Why are they accepting those applications to begin with?
Because they're making them, you have to accept them.
No, you don't, and, no, not unless y'all change the, no.
Well, they don't know at the point of application, at the beginning, what they're gonna find along the way, there are inspections, there are site visits.
They're, they're finding, this stuff's coming in afterwards, they're finding all this stuff coming, they're not like, it's not like a person applies and says he's got a criminal record, they probably, well, but if they don't do it right, then they find it out later, then that's not our fault.
They lie.
Or they don't fill out their application fully, or they, I mean, they're, they're, what she's telling us is they're determining these things as they go along in the investigation, the person who applied should know, they shouldn't be applying if they don't qualify, and they.
Yeah, yeah, oh, no, I was just wondering, because they, they're, it's stated that if it's not fully completed, you can't accept that application, that's part of it, so.
Well, but the investigation is part of the, which you find later.
You be doing, if you don't get the money, you be doing all the work for free?
Yeah.
You know, and then you know what, what happens after that?
Yeah.
Nobody gets the money.
There, if they're, if someone applies and they shouldn't, that's on them, so, okay, so is that clear enough on the motion, was that, was that good, Karen?
Do I have a motion on the floor? Do you hear a second?
Second.
Upon appeal, two hundred and fifty from the applicant and two hundred and fifty from the county, is it from that a thousand dollars?
No, it's additional cost.
From the county?
We have to pay for part of it.
Where is that coming from?
That would be from the application fee that's already accepted.
That would specify, it comes from the application fee.
Well, no, we're not saying that yet, we're, that's probably where it's gonna come from, but we don't.
The sheriffs or the county would probably draw that from those fees, but.
But I mean, you, you're not, I, I wanna get the appellate thing in place now, where the fees come from, we can work out later, I want it done now, so when all these new ones that are coming in, that we're not gonna have to, because we're gonna get stuck with all of it now.
Yeah, gonna be up stacks.
Yeah, I mean, that thousand dollars, I wouldn't count on that, five hundred of that coming for appeals, because we're not making any money on this thing anyway. So, the, yep.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
You got the motion? Yeah.
I can do it again, if you want me to, I'm happy to.
Yes.
The motion would be effective today, the appellate process would be, two hundred and fifty dollars would be paid for upfront by the person appealing, and the county would then out of funds to be determined where to come from later, would cover the other two fifty in cost, and that's effective today. That would be the motion, is that good?
Only for the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you wanna make a separate, and just so it's clear there, that will only affect ones appeals filed after today?
Well, I said it, I said affected today.
Okay, got it.
I mean, I wish it wouldn't, I mean, if there's a way to go back and do it, I would, but if you're telling me I can't, I won't.
Okay, so, okay, so, only for the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all same sign, more, no, all same, motion passed, okay.
Now, the question, though, that you have, that we wanna do is, what are we going to, what do we need to do on these appeals, Jenny, I mean, you're suggesting this five hundred dollar fee, how many do we have currently?
How many appeals pending, let me find out.
And then where are we gonna, you're thinking that'll come from the, I guess it's gonna have to come from the application fees, which is kind of a bummer, but.
We have four that need to be handled, so.
Okay, so then af, so those four at five hundred dollars apiece, are those judges that we've already previously agreed and appointed, are they willing to take it for that?
Oh, for that fee, that we have not, um, that, I mean, that's a twofold question, first, they need to be sure that they can even do it as judges, and then second, if they can, um.
Then if they can't, we need to come up with some alternatives today, is what you're telling us, right, and do you have suggestions on who some suggested people would be, in case, I'd prefer it to be the judges, but if they can't, I understand, we all agree on those suggestions.
Are, Jenny, are you talking about someone like, uh, a mediator, maybe?
Anybody.
It can be anyone, um, and this is the part where I would have, uh, I would, if you can go into executive, um, for this part of the discussion, I would ask to.
Uh, okay, I guess, sure. What could be that secretive, but, okay.
Okay.
Actually, it's not, um, we don't know the answer to the legal question about the judges, we do know it can be anyone, we don't know, um.
So what's the legal, what's the legal reason we're going back there?
Yeah, no, uh, there's not a, a legal reason to go back there, what, um, we have the magistrates answer to the Board of Judges, right, they're, so, that would be, um, a question, I believe, for the Commissioners to communicate with the Board of Judges about whether that would be acceptable to the Board of Judges, to have those two people appointed, um, but I don't know if you want to direct, um.
And who are the magistrate, I don't even know who they are anymore.
Well, there's Judge Shower, and then I believe there's Judge Magrigal.
Rodrigo.
And is there, are there only two, I think?
If, if that would be, that's fine with me, I mean, those two would be great, too, if they would've been.
Then I can, if, if, if the court would like, I can make that inquiry with the Board of Judges, I don't know if that's gonna be satisfactory, it would be ideal for the county, um, but they may have the same issues, so, um.
But then, so what do we need to come, so let's say.
I would like to have one civilian, non-judge, who.
Do you have a suggestion?
We don't have, I don't have a suggestion.
Okay, how about, I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, if he'll do it, John Martinez, to be the hearing officer.
I just wanna ask one question, one last question, Jenny.
And do we need another one, anybody wanna put another one in?
What, what, what about the public defender's office?
Five hundred bucks?
Anyone, if they're willing to take it.
I mean, they're, they're already employed by us, aren't they, or?
They are, but this is not a part of their job description.
This would be separate.
This would be completely separate.
I'm just saying, maybe, if they could, if they wanted to, or what, I mean, that's what they need, they're public, you know?
Well, that, they might be, do you have a person in mind?
I don't have, I don't even know any of them, I'm just saying that department right there, you know, maybe they would have somebody.
Okay, how about that, if the judges can do it, great, if the magistrate can do it, great, and if not, anybody got a problem with John Martinez as the civilian? Okay, can we make that as a motion?
Have a problem, John Martinez.
Can we make that as a motion?
I will work, I will take that and run with it, and we'll, uh, I'll report back.
And the motion would be the judges first, the magistrate second, and if none of those works, then to appoint John Martinez, if he'll accept it for five hundred bucks for a hearing officer for for these game room hearing things, anybody got a second on that?
Second.
Yeah, it's easy, judges, magistrate.
Motion on the floor, seconds, only for the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passed, okay. So where do we go from here, Jenny?
Former judge, attorney, that's a good one.
You wanna go to executive session?
I don't think we, that's it, right?
That is it.
I think you've covered everything that was on there.
Uh, memories?
Is there any, uh, any Germans in memory of any, wanted anybody has any, uh, German, Commissioner? Commissioner? Oh, we have no German, no memory, uh, do I hear motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Is it to adjourn or keep on going? Only for the motion to adjourn?
Time.
Say aye?
Time.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Time?
Time, twelve, twelve thirty-six.
Time.
Adjourn?
Time.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
Time, twelve thirty-seven.
Twelve twenty-seven. I'm coming, I'm coming.